In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12, 2020, county situatio public meetings shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted following the meeting. Public comment will be available via Zoom. Community members can also email me, p gates at sit.org with questions. Please, I'll try to monitor that email throughout the meeting, but probably a chat on the Zoom is the easiest way to to make a comment. I'd like to call the Situate School Committee meeting Monday, July 27, 2020 to order at 6:06. I'm going to call it to order via roll call vote. Brandalini?
Yes.
Is Mike Hayes here yet? Limblom?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gates? Yes. Are officially have opened our meeting. We now have 202 petitioners. This is a record. This is great. Okay, obviously, we're all here to conduct business of the school committee to discuss the agenda as represented. Before doing that, I just wanted to provide a few comments at the beginning of this meeting, and then we'll work it, we'll go per the agenda as stated. First thing I'd like to say is that, well, I guess what I want to say is thank you to the school committee. Over the past six months, we have done the following. We have hired or had a hand in hiring a new superintendent, a new special ed director, a new business manager, and two principals. This is all in the midst of a pandemic. I want to thank you all for your hard work throughout this time. And I always say this, none of us signed up to do this. We never could have expected that we were going to have to hire all these leadership positions in the midst of a pandemic. So again, thank you to all those that have done that. I just want everyone to know, this probably is, you know, not really stated, and maybe I shouldn't, but in addition to our school committee member roles, all of us had or have had full-time jobs in addition to our responsibilities as being a school committee member. So thank you again for all the hard work. With that being said, we have a lot of difficult decisions to make over the next six months. In an effort to continue and fulfill our responsibilities, the school committee is participating in professional development of our own. We are members of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, otherwise known as MASC, and I'll refer to them in the future. Our membership provides us access to workshops that are designed to assist in effectively tearing out these responsibilities and to better serve our communities. The school committee, in addition to Superintendent Burkhead and our note taker recorder, Jeannie, we participated last Thursday in our first workshop called Laying the Foundation. We had many takeaways that included how to better communicate with each other in the public, how to run our meetings, and how to run our meetings. We anticipate creating our own set of school committee operating protocols to be shared publicly in the next few weeks. But I want to highlight a few of those that we, as a school committee, feel very strongly about. The intent is to set expectations to those in attendance today and in the future. The school committee will conduct its business through a set agenda. Emerging items will be addressed in subsequent meetings through agenda items. Here's the most important one that we'll talk about for a long time to come, but this is a very important one. I know many of you are regular attendees of school committee meetings. Obviously, with all that's going on, this has attracted a lot more attention. We acknowledge, and those in attendance acknowledge, that a school committee meeting is a meeting of the school committee that is held in public, not a public meeting. And we will make every effort to ensure that the committee meetings are effective and efficient. We will base our decisions upon available facts, vote our convictions, avoid bias, and uphold and support the decisions of the majority of the school committee once a decision is made. This is our opportunity to be together. One other thing I want to mention is the school committee cannot meet outside of these public meetings. We're not allowed to. It's illegal. So most of the time that we're talking about these things, it really is the first time that we're talking about them. With that being said, it's our opportunity as a committee to be together for the first time to discuss these issues. And I think that's a very important fact that sometimes may get overlooked. With that being said, we have one other item to mention today. We have one member who's worked in the district for 10-plus years, Mr. Donlin, who's been our business manager, director of finance and business manager for that period of time, has been through, what, three superintendents? Six superintendents? Been through a lot of challenges, and this will be his last official school committee meeting. I wanted to personally thank Paul for all his hard work and dedication to the district. He's had a lot of hard decisions to provide recommendations on, and he's served in his role in a great manner. So I want to at least acknowledge that. So thank you, Paul. I can't hear you. Hold on.
Yeah, that I just want to thank all the citizens of Situate. I think I've been a pretty good steward of their tax dollars for these last 13, 14 years. And I did the best I can. These last three or four months have been a little bit trying, as we all know. I think you put it pretty mildly, Peter, with the school committee having to do what they had to do for these last couple of months and all the administrative positions they had to hire. It's been a great run. Number five out of 10 children. Grew up in Abington. I never thought I would ever work in a school system. I came out in the wrong year. I came out in 1982, which was the beginning of Prop 2 and 1/2, and all my friends were all getting riffed. They were in school systems way back when, so I chose the business world, and then the school system chose me in Mark Mason way back when, probably 13, 14 years ago. And it's been a good ride, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. And now I have time for my grandchildren and my wife, Jan, who I've known for 47 years, so, and married for 39. I can't believe she actually married me, but hey, we always marry up, and I've married up. So I'm looking forward to spending my time down here on the Cape, and I'm looking forward to spending a lot of time with those grandchildren and spoiling them rotten. And then handing them back. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Paul. Again, it's been a pleasure. It's been a professional and a personal experience, so I appreciate all the stressful and fun and exciting times we've had.
Paul, my friend, I'm going to miss you.
Oh, thank you, Michael. Yes.
We've been friends a long time and done a lot of good work and hard work, and you've been a great asset to the town of Situate.
Well, thank you.
And I hope your golf game improves.
I hope so, too.
Paul, I hope you have a great retirement. Have a lot of fun spending time with your family and friends, and thank you for everything. It's been a great eight years knowing you, and you will be missed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Let us know when more grandchildren arrive.
I got one coming in October.
Oh, wow.
Number three, so. Anyways.
All right. So enjoy your last meeting. This might be, you know, this is a record. We have 237.
I know.
That includes us, you know, the school committee and others, but that's definitely a record, so you can go out in style, Paul.
There you go. Good.
All right, anyone else? All right. All right, now back to our agenda, item number two, acceptance of minutes for May 18. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the May 18, 2020 school committee minutes as presented.
All right, motion by Mr. Long.
I second.
Second by Ms. Limblom. We'll do a roll call vote. Roll call vote with Mike Hayes. Can we try your audio? Looks like it works. Does it, can you hear me? I can now, yep.
Okay, I vote yes.
All right, Gates, yes. Brandalini?
Get down, mute yourself.
Brandalini?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. All right. I'll make sure everything's in order here. Our next item under new business is the Situate Safe and Strong Reopening Preliminary Plan. I'd like to, first of all, make a few brief comments. Superintendent Burkhead officially joined us on July 1. He's been working diligently since then, but even before. He's had to come to a new district, learn about what Situate's all about, meet all the staff, understand how it could best service us, and create a reopening plan. To challenge that, we think he's done a fantastic job in. Tonight, we're going to, again, as I said earlier, this is really the first time that the school committee has seen this as well. We do get what is often referred to as backup materials. That's just so that we can prep and prepare for our meetings. So we received this, I don't know, 24 or 48 hours ago, and that's the only preliminary report that we have, oh, sorry, preview we've had, but it's the same exact report that's being presented tonight. So with that being said, I want to hand it over to Superintendent Burkhead.
Thank you, Chairman Gates, and I also want to, first of all, I want to start off by apologizing to Mr. Donlin. I think I might have leaked out that he was attending tonight's meeting is probably why we have 246 people here. So Paul, that's a tribute to you, and I've only known you for this month, but I will say, on his own time during the transition, you know, Chairman Gates had mentioned that I've been working, obviously, to get to know everybody before officially starting. Paul had reached out on several occasions and met me in person and via Zoom, just to get me acclimated, and he was here working today. He's here tonight. So the first thing I asked Paul when I met him was, you know, or he said to me was, whatever you need, I'm here to help you, and he's done that right to the very end. So Paul, thank you. It says a lot about your character, and the short time I've known you, you're a class act. So thank you for your service to Situate and to our kids. Next, I want to thank the school committee as well for our professional development last Thursday. It was the first time, you know, we were able to sit in a room, I believe, all together besides town meeting. And it was extremely helpful to me. It's something in their new superintendent's program. They highly recommend it. Already, it's paid off for me, and I know we have more meetings, but extremely helpful to me. So I wanted to thank you in addition to all you do to go out three or four hours and to do more work is appreciated by me and very helpful. Next, before I present, I do want to thank our Safe and Strong Task Force, our Safe and Strong Steering Committee for all their work and efforts in helping with this framework we're going to present tonight. Also, with the very involved community, including parents, guardians, and caregivers, students, and our staff. The goal of this document in preparation and also moving forward before the final draft will be to take as much input as we can, to look at surveys, to have forums, to involve conversation, and there was a lot of it. So I thank you that the forums were hugely successful with large turnouts. The surveys responses were record-breaking, I'm sure. So a lot went into this, and the task force and steering committee have been working hard at this. I want to thank our central office and principals who are technically on, at least the principals on vacation, but coming in and working on this. So I think we're all putting our efforts in. And there's no right plan. I think there's just the best plan for Situate, and I think that's what we're working towards. We'll also mention that the timeline for this, tonight's document is a preliminary plan that's due to the Commission of Education by Friday. According to the commissioner, it does not need school committee vote. The final draft due August 10th will need school committee approval and will be the guiding force behind that document. So I want everyone to know that, keep in mind that tonight's document is a draft. We will be working over the next couple of weeks and asking for feedback to refine it. And as new information comes out from either the state or from our constituents, it certainly will be revised and improved. So further ado, I will try to share my screen. Chairman Gates, can you see that?
I can.
Okay.
Nice. Yep, works.
Okay, thank you. So notice how I underline the word draft? Again, this isn't final. The good thing about getting a draft out is that, you know, having no plan, obviously, initially where everyone starts, you have a lot of anxiety and unknowns, and there's millions of questions when you just get piecemeal information. So we're trying to get this draft out here to solicit feedback and comments and conversation around our plan and to build on that and prove it, to make it great for the start of school. So a motto that came up in one of the groups, I believe it was one of the breakout groups in the task force that we really liked, is that go slow to go fast. There's no one that I know that has said we don't want to go back to school. There's no person out there that says learning isn't important. I think we all agree on that foundationally. So our thought in what's best back to what's best for Situate on all the information we've received is to not rush this. You know, to not go all in too fast is to take the information, go slow, be smart, and assess regularly and improve. And the underlying quote there is do what's best and safest for our students and protect our staff. So we've kind of made that a mantra when we put together this plan, that we've got a twofold mission here. And we want to keep our kids safe and get them educated at the highest level. We believe we can do that. And we also want to protect our staff, make sure they're safe and able to teach our students at the highest level. So here's a table of contents. This will be up on the website, and I'll get this out in my presentation tomorrow to as many outlets as we can, so people have a copy in case you weren't able to attend tonight. But just an outline of what I'll be talking about, some medical updates, a continuum of models that the district, I mean, the state has asked for that will be offered in this document. Our color coding scheme that will be unique to us, that we present. And of the colors, the orange hybrid is the one that we've decided to start with. Part of the commissioner's request was that you highlight the plan you want to enter school with. So that's the orange hybrid model. We'll talk about that. We'll talk about the AB hybrid cohort model, and I'll be defining these terms as well as we go through. A hybrid is a combination of in-school and at-home learning. A cohort is a group of students. They can be broken up into two groups, for example, alphabetically. That's a cohort. It's a grouping of students. And so we'll talk about that. Early childhood model and some of our thoughts and recommendations for that. Y full day, pre-K and K. Remote learning will be our red color, and we'll talk about that, and finally ending up with transportation. So we felt it was important to guide our work to come up with some principles that we valued and believed in as a task force, and these are what we came up with. And I thought it was really interesting that we discussed cultures, not just the word safety, excellence, flexibility, and teamwork, respect. I think a culture goes more deeply. It's something that we want to create or continue creating in our district and in our schools. So this will be something we're focused on, not only in the reopening, but across all areas that we cover this year. So I won't read it all for you, but I'll highlight maybe some terms that I thought were interesting. The culture of safety, that's a one sentence, but I really liked how it's physical, social, and emotional health. I think that, you know, through COVID, we all have experiences, I believe, whether we have children or not, that are emotional, and we're going to have to really focus on that as students reenter school and adults. Culture of excellence, this goes to just, you know, being the best school district in the world. What does that look like? How do we define it? It needs to be an expectation. Personal excellence needs to be an expectation for every one of us, adults and children, starting with me. So that's something that you'll notice here, we capitalized our collective responsibility. So, you know, I think working on this plan, and although it's been challenging, obviously, for everyone, I think it's a great opportunity for our district and our community to work together. And I've already seen that, and we'll continue to see that. We have to, to get this plan out and to get school up and running. The last one is culture of flexibility, respect, and teamwork. It just talks about working together, respect. I think what I've really noticed in coming to Situate and all the forums and conversations I've had, even though the backdrop of some stress and anxiety and unknowns, everyone's been respectful. And I really appreciate that. We get a lot further with those kind of dialogues and important questions. And I want to thank everyone for that, and that's in our guiding principles that we want to continue that and respect other people's opinions and different ideas. And then the last couple of sentences, student-centered learning environment, obviously, we're all in for that. And then the flexibility word comes up, and be able to adapt. And the important last line, and I think we all, is unique to this year, is the external health conditions and circumstances beyond our control. I think what we try to do here is make this plan as flexible and seamless between models as possible, and so that if, for example, the governor comes in at some point and says we're shutting down tomorrow, we'll be prepared to go fully remote seamlessly. And I think that's the, you know, that's our goal, and this plan is to move seamlessly through our color codes and through our phases. So medical updates. I just wanted to cite two here, and I, you know, we all know that there's many, many documents out there and research studies going on. There's multiple each day, and I try to read as many as I. These are two pretty highly touted or credible sources, so I wanted to include them. I also, when the presentation goes out, I included the link for both, obviously noting that I just pulled some things out for this presentation, but they go a lot deeper into detail, and they're very helpful in us as we plan. So I provided them as part of the presentation for you. The American Academy of Pediatrics on June 25th came out and advocated that all considerations for the coming school year should start with the goal of having students physically present in school. The importance of in-person is well documented, and there is already negative impacts on school because of school closures in the spring. I don't think anybody, again, would disagree with that. It's how we do it, and if we do it safely. So over for the Centers for Disease and Control and Prevention, this just came out a few days ago. And there's a lot of good information in here. And, you know, kind of the same things. It talks about schools playing a critical role, the importance of academics, but also social, emotional health through school. We know that if students can't see their teachers or connect with them, there's just no replacement in school learning. So I wanted to share that. I have a video here that the Department of Education shared with us. I'll see if it works. It's very short, but again, this is from their Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Is it supposed to be volume? I can't hear it.
Can you hear it, Peter?
I can't. Any other school committee members hear it?
Okay.
No, can't hear the video.
Okay, sorry. So it was just a supplement. It's real short. You can watch it. It just basically highlights what some of the doctors are saying about Massachusetts rates, you know, and I will qualify that with, we need to check the rates daily, weekly, and that we'll continue to do that. So that was just shared with us. Now here's the, and again, we'll be sharing this document so that folks can watch that tomorrow when it's posted. The continuum that we have to present in this plan. We have to have an in-person learning with new safety requirements model. This would include all students return in person with classroom schedules, protocols, and all modifications to meet the health requirements laid out by the state. Second one is the hybrid learning. Students learn both in-person and at home remotely. And the remote learning takes place exclusively at home, and there's a couple of different ways that can happen as well. If there's a shutdown of schools, like in March, that would obviously refer us to remote learning. But also for students and parents that decide not to come back to school, and just so everyone knows, that will be a choice for all of you. If you're not comfortable with this model and you want to learn remotely, that will be an option. So there's a couple of ways that remote learning can happen. So here's our color-coded system, which we're trying to make this as user-friendly as possible. And we thought of a stoplight signaling. On your left, you'll see the green is return without restrictions in person. You know, and this one is when there's a vaccine or a cure. This is the, you know, the old way of school or the old normal. So that's green. And yellow is next. In-person learning with new safety requirements. Students return in person, schedules, protocols, modified to meet health requirements, compliance with health protocols. So this one's a little different here. There's more restrictions. There's safety precautions and mitigations, masks, spacing, social distancing, all those kinds of things, but it has majority of students that can return in staff back. Then the orange model, which is the one we're recommending to start off with, is hybrid learning to start out, with students learn both in-person and remotely, where there's training, reinforcement, and compliance with health protocols. And then the red is the remote learning. We talked about the two options with that. And I'll get into more specifics of the model that we've identified. But if orange is our option of hybrid, our goal obviously is to go to the left, but we can pivot to the right to red, or to the left, yellow, seamlessly when we have our final plan done, and that's the goal. So within our orange hybrid, we were really big fans of, and a lot of people spoke to this about phasing this in. Again, go slow to go fast. And you know, our state has successfully done this to date, and we literally like that model, and we want to be a model for the state as well in how we re-enter learning. And so the first phase is staff in the building for PD, which is professional development, training, and preparation. There's a lot of new mandates. There's a lot of new safety training that our staff is not familiar with. So there needs to be time to do that. We absolutely understand and appreciate that. It says there, this may be three to 10 days, determined by the commissioner of education. Right at the start of our meeting, I got an email that there seemed to be an agreement with the Mass Teachers Association and the commissioner that that will be 10 days. So I think that's a good breakthrough. I think it's, knowing that now, we can adjust our phases as needed. These phases are adjustable. Again, they're just initial recommendation. And so the teachers, now that we know from the commissioner, will be in 10 days. And what that does is it shortens the school year by 10 days. So the traditional school year is 180 days. This upcoming year will be 170 days. Okay, and the time on learning will be reduced accordingly. We'll get those numbers out. So that's hot off the press, and now that we know that, we can start getting a schedule of working, updating and revising our calendar for the school year, and start giving people actual dates instead of weeks. And that's kind of why I had the first, second, third week here. We did not know what the commissioner was going to do. And that's kind of why I had the first, second, third week here. We did not know what the commissioner was going to decide. So just found that out. So if it's 10 days. Again, that's before school starts. It's time to prepare our staff, uh, for safety protocols, for new learning, for remote learning technology, all that kind of stuff. Uh, then phase two, which would be the first week of school, whatever they, they be, they might be, and we'll get that out, uh, as soon as possible. Staff are in the building and all students begin remote learning. And so the thought process here was if we had less days, three days, four days, um, that we may need more time, which would be a week to allow staff to connect with their kids, introduce them to, uh, the protocols and how we are doing school now. Um, and then it'll allow that week time, you'll see built in this phase in model, um, orientations. We really felt strongly that, um, school is going to be very different for children and their families. So before students just showing up at the door, we wanted to ease them in and have opportunities where they come to their school. And they have a way to see the expectations, see how to line up, see where their classroom is, talk to their teachers, get their questions answered. And also, um, couple that with parent, um, forums in which parents will be oriented to the new protocols, get their questions answered. Uh, before their children start the school the following week. So that would be breaking, broken up into phases. So we thought that was their primary focus, uh, students. The state refers to them as high needs. We felt primary focus was a better way of phrasing that. And the state has identified five categories of students. And so we'll, we will have to define that at Situate. We have not done that yet. Tonight, we allude to one, one category there, but that, that can include different groups with, for example, uh, students with special needs, intensive special needs, um, homeless students, English learning students. Pre-K to five is a high priority for the state. So those are some examples of students, once we define that, that will be coming in the first phase. Phase three, second week of school, uh, staffers are in the building, primary focus students begin their face-to-face learning. So we've oriented them the first week, uh, connected with our other students remotely online to do opening week activities, get them acclimated. And then we have actual students in the building. Again, these phases can be adjusted timelines. They're just recommendations right now. As we didn't know the, uh, phase one amount of days. So all remaining students returning to school, uh, will have orientations this week. So all those students will return, um, in phase four, but in the second week of school, they'll all be coming in and having an orientation as well as their parents. So we're again, we're going slow to go fast. We're having students come in, talk about how we do lunch, how we're lining up, how we enter the school, leave the school. Uh, safety precautions and, um, you know, the same for parents. I think this is a community, um, it's going to take community, um, teamwork. For example, at home, we're going to ask that you reinforce the, the same strategies we're using at school to mitigate the spread of, of virus. And that's wearing the masks, social distancing, hand washing, um, and not sending your children to school when they're sick. So those things will be reinforced and it's our goal that at home and in school, we're speaking the same language and have the same expectations. So that we can do this right. So that's the reason for the orientations. And then the third week of school, students are back in, in, um, a hybrid model, which I'll explain in the next slides. Uh, but that's our phase in of a hybrid model. So we're, we're coming in slow. We're not bringing everybody in at once or even half the school at once. It's a more measured approach and it's a safer approach. And then down here, um, after three weeks of this learning, now that we're all into our, our rhythm, uh, this will be six weeks into the year. It would be a good time to assess how things are going. By then we'd have a, a lot of feedback from parents, students, faculty and staff in the community to adjust as we go. Again, the whole goal here is flexibility. So are we ready to go to yellow? Are we, do we need to go to red? That kind of conversation. So that assessment is allowed after the six weeks. So here's a, here's a typical overview of what a schedule might look like for, um, a hybrid model. And the A B model means that students would be split in half to reduce the number of students in a school at one time. So if your school has 500 students on Monday, 250 approximately would be in school. The other 250 would be at home learning remotely. And this particular model, um, is a two-day-on, three-day-off model. It's, uh, we looked at several models. Our task force did a real good job of, of researching each and conversations about that as well as our steering committee. And we found this was the best for Situate. Again, there's no right one. You'll see multiple different cohorts out there. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about the strengths of that. The on, so the first cohort, let's say you find yourself in cohort A and we may break them up alphabetically. Another thing we're very cognizant of is scheduling so that students in the same family go to the school on the same days. So if we were to do that alphabetically, would likely be the scenario where that could be best, um, addressed across the district. So that group Monday, uh, would go a full day, cohort A, and go a full day on Tuesday. This allows, uh, back-to-back days and continuation of learning with students for teachers. And then on Wednesday, you'll see, and then it's flipped. I'll jump to Thursday and Friday, and we simply flip it on Thursday and Friday. Okay. And then if you look at the middle here on Wednesday, that's a remote learning day for all students. And we felt this was really important because this is going to be a very, um, flexible time and we're going to be adjusting as we go. And the old tradition, and I, this is one thing I like about this model that wasn't in traditional schools. So there's some new things that, that really could be done better. And that was just built in time for professional development and, uh, collaboration. Kind of as we go, work with our staff and have time to improve the curriculum, adjust, get feedback. And so Wednesday is kind of broken up into the PM being opportunity for adults to do that. And it, and it will allow us to be flexible, but also to coordinate and communicate district-wide to make sure that instruction is of a high quality. What it also does too is we built in, um, a deep cleaning day with all the children out of the building in the middle of the week in between cohorts. Medical advice would have, you'd say that that's a good time to clean in between cohorts, have a day in there to do that. So that will be our deep cleaning and we'll get that plan out in the final draft, but that made a lot of sense to us as well. The other beauty of this model is in the morning, these are working with individual students, uh, either with office hours for extra help. Students could come into the building by appointment, working with, uh, staff. Evaluations, I know we have a lot of work to do on our special education evaluations that allows us time to get those done. So it, it, it creates a window here where students can get the specific help they need in individualized detention. It also slows things down a little bit, allows us to do some professional development and collaboration and clean the buildings. Now I'm going to go back and talk a little bit about what a typical Monday would be. And we don't have all the specific details. Again, this is a framework, so it, it'll, it'll invite questions and then we'll hash those details out. But for example, the ideal situation would have, let's say there's 20 students in the grade one class. 10 students would be in that class. Let's say they're in Ms. Jones's class, the 10 class, 10 students, uh, would be in person with Ms. Jones here. 10 students, uh, the other 10 that are in that class would be home. But through Zoom or other technologies would be working with that class simultaneously. I think another advantage that we learned in, uh, this remote learning time is to, um, have meetings where some, some people are present and some are not. And, um, we think we can do that. I know other schools are doing that with their kids. And another thing we thought was important that we heard loud and clear that this new remote learning will not be March's remote learning. Okay. And that's kind of what you're seeing here is these students at home will have a set schedule. They'll have access to a teacher. They'll be learning. They'll have assignments. Uh, the time may be a little less to allow for more asynchronous work, knowing that parents have unique schedules. But what we'd like to do here is keep them with their classmates and connect them, uh, with technology so that they're continuing learning. So the same lessons being taught in this example. And then when they switch here, the teacher just gets to work in person with this group. Cohort A is now online, learning and getting the information, uh, from the teacher at the same time. Finally, what this does is if we go into a, uh, red situation, a remote situation. The same teacher has been teaching the same children in this model. Uh, if we were to go remote, they've been learning the same thing. We don't miss a beat. Ms. Jones still has her cohort. Now they're all just learning remotely. And the curriculum continues as it would in class. That's kind of the difference between March's reality in this reality is that the expectation would be that the instruction would continue. And we've got a built-in time here that we can assess how that instruction is different at home, knowing that it is. And so for example, if we were to go from a yellow to a red, we'd have time built in weekly to work with our staff, talk with our staff, get feedback from our families and adjust as we go. So there's the built-in flexibility within the model to allow our staff to adjust and provide the essential curriculum for our students. It also allows if we were to go to yellow and have all students return. For example, if we go to three feet distancing at some point with health guidelines, all students are able to return. Ms. Jones's students would simply all be in the room now. So that's the ideal situation. But this also considers that, um, students and staff may not be able to return to school. Uh, either medically or, uh, in the student's case by, by parent choice. We certainly respect and appreciate that and have that built in. Those students would have a, a separate remote experience. Okay. We could put them in a class here or we'd have teachers working at home remotely too, to act as, uh, support. And for our teachers, uh, for our teachers that are in the building. So I think that would enhance learning as well. So we're able to configure that in this model. So early childhood model. You know, one of the recommendations, like I said, of, of getting kids back is, uh, our concern over our pre-K and K students, actually our, our elementary, uh, students. We all know that, um, all kids are important to come back to school certainly, but the priority in the youngest years, the most important in our learning, you learn to read, write, get social cues. So with a, with a nearly empty building, we wanted to include our early childhood students, uh, in that, uh, primary focus group. And get them back on a four-day school, um, in person, um, with six feet social distancing. Please know that all these recommendations that we decided to go with were with six feet spacing. We understand that in preschool and kindergarten, that's tough to do sometimes. And we will do our best and there's, there's some strategies out there to do that. And we'll look at that with our staff and work with the medical field on how to best do that. It's not yet in this document, but our state guidelines, our students will wear masks, grade two through 12. We're going to recommend that all K through 12 students wear masks. We're not going to mandate that at the younger grades now. We're just going to highly recommend it. So for, and again, this is an option for parents. So for our pre-K and K, Monday, they'd be in person with their teacher, actually Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then Wednesday, um, both half-day and full-day would be learning remotely. On the four-day-a-week model, the half-day students would go home at a half-day and the full-day students would stay the full day. And we understand that there's a difference between half-day and full-day learning. We wanted to make sure that that in our own remote model is also reflected. So that when we provide, when we roll this out on Wednesdays, there'll be a full day of learning for structured learning. A little differently, obviously than the in-person, um, and the half-day students will receive, um, the half-day version. So we'll be working on that to kind of, delineate the difference and such. You know, and I, I just wanted to put the slide down to just kind of reiterate why we're recommending that our, you know, and I know some districts are bringing back K through five. Eventually, again, the flexibility would be let's go slow to go fast if our younger students who are, are typically, um, you know, follows instructions that, uh, and, uh, you know, I think they're, they're a great group to be in, but here's some reasons why we thought about that. Early learners, PK to five considered prioritized by the state. I said that. And ultimately the goal would be to get in all elementary first if we could, if space allows and safety. But we wanted to, with the space we have, include pre-K to K in the first wave. Uh, the survey results, parent forms and others solicited feedback showed that the distance learning was least successful for students in the youngest grades. We understand that pre-K and K students, you know, have a more difficult time, middle school students or high school students, sitting in front of the computer for any period of time. So that's another obvious reason. And that was very clear in the, in the feedback we've received. Students, students in the youngest grades need to learn through playing hands-on, experiencing practical activities such as drawing and social interaction. Obviously best utilized in person. And then for many of these young students, this is their first opportunity for building relationships and connections with school setting. Talked about social and also emotional connections there. The shorter attention limit independence of young students makes discipline learning extremely difficult. And, um, children under 10 transition rate, uh, trend, that should be, excuse me, transmission rate much lower than adolescents or adults. That's the current data and shared with us by our school physician. Preschool and kindergarten lays the foundation for future learning. And so we're going on two years of them, uh, those younger kids, all kids, but especially those pre-K and K of, of no in-person instructions. That was a concern to us. That would be our recommend, recommendation moving forward. With the ability to flex more students in more grades in or less, depending on where we go with our, our plan. You know, I know a big question would be about fees and we haven't decided on that. And that's a school committee matter that I know we'll have to face it as we develop the final plan. They just want to include that we have a plan, haven't discussed fees at this. Well, here's remote, uh, learning in red. And again, I said this earlier, it's not your spring of 2020 remote learning. So we've had time to improve this. We're continuing to work on this. We'll work on it as we go. I kind of mentioned a lot of these when it recurs, um, the third bullet's important. I think it's to replicate a typical school as much as possible with structure and accountability. And it's back to that. We're all in this together. So that's accountability for all of us. You know, starting with me, uh, our staff, our parents, guardians and our students, you know. If this is going to work and this phase and approach of work, and work, we all have to contribute and follow the, the expectations. But there will be more structure when they're at home than there was before. And specifically schedules, rigor, grading attendance, that'll all count. I know in the spring it didn't. And so that's a, that's an update. Consistent curriculum instruction across each grade level, school and content area. So, you know, this is again, a wonderful opportunity for us to work with our staff. And because the remote learning will, you know, you know, whatever format we're in, whether it's all remote or, or hybrid remote, it's a great opportunity to get all grade three students across this district, learning the same curriculum, same pacing. And that's our goal for all grades. So this is a, a fresh start and ability to do that. The timing on Wednesdays allows and, and now the, with the, you know, the reinvention, if you will, of Zoom meetings, we can allow, uh, to school meetings where, or the elementary schools and upper grade schools can actually meet in professional development and talk about curriculum on our Wednesdays. So that's an advantage to getting a smooth and consistent curriculum out across our schools and grade levels. Something that not sure was happening before, but was, uh, is needed, and I think is a common learning platform. Instead of having multiple platforms, I think we have to be consistent on, okay, what are we committing to as a Google Classroom? You know, is it Schoolology? And is it different at each school level, elementary, middle and high? And so we want to be consistent with that. Make it easier for students and parents and staff. You know, and this, this middle one is a kind of important one to me and, uh, includes daily face-to-face contact. I think, you know, that's going to be, uh, an expectation that in our new learning, that your children will get, you know, daily contact with educators and adults in as much as possible. I think that you'll see the difference in this model versus old model. And then, uh, use developed curriculum maps aligned to mass frameworks. Then we talked about time for teachers to plan and discuss student need. Okay. The last slide is transportation. Several core practices will support safe school bus operations this fall. And, um, just so you know, families, I'll be sending out this week, uh, a survey. I know after hearing the plan now and having a day or two to think about it, your mind may have changed or you may have decisions, but I'll be asking you, you know, if you plan to send your child back to school at this point, your mind still may change, but it gives us an idea for our planning. I'll also ask if you're, um, deciding to still take the bus. And if you've already paid, you'll certainly get your money back. But these are the protocol, and I would encourage because of the new bus regulations where it's basically one But these are the protocols, and I would encourage because of the new bus regulations where it's basically one child per seat unless you're in the family. That this may force us to do multiple bus runs and possibly stagger start times. If we have to take multiple bus runs because we've reduced considerably the amount of kids that can be on a bus. So if you, if there's a way to, that you could get your children to school, I would highly recommend that. Masks, so all students on the bus, regardless of age, are required to wear masks. So this includes kindergarten and preschool students for the bus. And exemptions for students for medical or behavioral reasons and associated protocols are further described in the guidance. This is right from the Department of Education. So we'll work with families like we will with students wearing masks in school. If there's an individual case where the child cannot wear a mask. We'll work with the families. We're also, that's going to be part of our orientation and education process for our students and families and staff. Is to ensure that those students that aren't wearing masks are not alienated, but also. That we keep safe distances from all students. And that's why the six feet rule is, is a better model at this time than the three foot rule, just another example. So distance on the bus, students should be seated no more than one student per bench, alternating sides for each row, so. Like diagonally, we will have these marked. So they'll be at least three feet apart and the bus seats are pretty tall, so that's a built-in divider. Children from the same household may sit together and in proximity, for example, two students from the same family can sit side by side. And so in ventilation, common sense, we'll keep the windows open as long as we can. Unless the weather's too cold or extreme conditions. Students will be assigned to a bus and they will be assigned seats. And a question has come up and this is, you know, good feedback is, you know, bus drivers driving the bus, who's going to monitor the kids, keep their masks on, stand in their seats. So we are considering at this time adding bus monitors. So we're strongly considering that. It has not been official yet, so we'll, we'll have to look into that, but that will help with supervision. Last point I made here is that, just that the state governance on. Bus transportation, it talks about. All children in grades, you know, we're mandated to provide transportation to all students in grades K through six. Six who reside more than two miles from the school. We're not entitled to provide it for anyone else. I'm not saying that we're going to that model. I am saying that we're going to do everything we can to avoid that, but I did want to put that because I know other districts have gone to that. So again, it's depending on how many bus runs, how many students are taking the bus. That survey will be really helpful. With getting back to us, whether you plan on sending your child to school and or on the bus. One last, couple last notes that I've added to the presentation is athletics. The Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association is working with the Commissioner and Department of Education. And they have a task force and they've, they postponed the season right now to September 14th. So no further decision has been made. Right now, they're not canceled fall sports, but they are postponed to September 14th. Also, you know, I know there's probably a million questions floating in everybody's head and I know, you know, this isn't a forum. But we will be offering, I think the, the parent forums went over very well and we're willing to do that again. Now that we have a plan or a draft plan in place to answer specific questions on the plan, and I think that's going to help us. Guide us in our task force work, in our steering committee work to finalize this plan, so. I hope that's helpful. So we'll be offering those forums and again, we'll be sending surveys out. Staff that are on tonight, your principals will be meeting with you this week. Because we feel that's important to get your feedback and feelings and input. So we're working right away to get feedback on this as well. And as far as community feedback, we do have a. My email is B Burkhead. Excuse me, W Burkhead, W B U R K H E A D at S C I T dot org. So you can email me and we have a kind of an email hotline. Twenty twenty reopen at S C I T dot org. And just so you know, that, that email, you'll get, you'll get an automatic response that just basically says to you, we've received it. We're going to forward this to the appropriate committee. We send that to our steering committees and or task force. And some of them are very personalized, so we don't share the personal information with the committees. But we also ask if there's personal information now that we have a plan in place that may be more specific to a certain school that you may contact your principal. So we wanted to give you multiple forums to do that. Also, as far as our communication going out, we'll continue and we hope that you find the Thursday thoughts helpful. We'll continue to do that. I want to thank Ms. Brandolini for attending this morning's Community Access. Monday morning report, we'll be doing that each morning with rotating school committee members. That will be live and posted, so I want to thank Seth for all his work on that and for the select board and town administrator Boudreaux for. Welcoming us in that venue, just one more opportunity to share what we're up to. And our website, again, we have one specific website where that's a work in progress, please be patient with us, but. Tonight's documents and every other document that we're getting, we're going to start putting up there so you have one place to go. So I think that's it for me right now. Chairman Gates.
Great, thanks Superintendent Burkhead. That was great, very informative. I know it's a lot of hard work. I just want to reiterate that. This is just not your, you didn't create this plan on your own. You had the support of. The community forums, staff forums, parent forums, student forums. The reopen committee and the steering committee, and this was the end result. So I just want to thank everyone for doing that. What I like to do now is. As we learned in our, in our professional development meeting last week. Following a presentation by anyone at the school committee meeting would then be followed up with questions from the school committee. I like to defer to each of the school committee members, their questions at this time. We have. I guess I'll allow as many questions as you have and then we'll move on to the next school committee member. And I'll, and I'll wrap it up or ask any questions that I may have following that. In relation to the public comment, which is to follow. Again, this just goes back to our protocols that this school committee meeting. Is a meeting of the school committee. It's not necessarily. A public meeting. We, we may try to answer your very specific questions, but we certainly cannot, this is not the forum. It's not a public forum like, like Superintendent Burkhead held in the past. We have 272 participants. If everyone has a question, we'll be here until tomorrow. So we have noted the questions in the chat. I'm not sure if we'll be able to answer those. At the moment, as Superintendent mentioned, you may email him directly or the twenty twenty reopen at S C I T dot org. We'll monitor these as they come in. In the meantime, I'd like to open up to the school committee members for any of their questions.
I have a few questions. I'll try to limit them, the top three or four, but. In the spring, when we went to remote learning. One of the issues with not making it as strict like as in-person school. Was equity and the students' equal access to the technology and even internet. So with the, if we do remote learning and grading and we have different standards, how is that equity going to be addressed? I don't know if that, I don't know if Bill can answer that.
Bill?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so I think it's a good question. I, I think that we're going to follow the same curriculum and guidelines, no matter whether you're home or not. And I think that having FaceTime with teachers is a different part that we didn't have last time. So I thought, I think having those two pieces in place that weren't necessarily there last time would allow. And then the, the opportunity for support. I will add too that one of the five indicators that I mentioned for. Primary focus students to come in early is if there's students that just don't have internet or we can't get them access to wifi. Those students would be able to come into school included in that primary focus group. Also in that category, Ms. Lindblom is a category of, they call it at-risk students. Or your students that may be in the lowest 25% academically. And that could be defined a few ways, but that's students who are basically over the spring and into, you know, this fall are really struggling. And are really not growing at a potential rate. So those students may fall in that category. So all those metrics have to be considered when we develop who, who's able to come back and fits into that category. But, you know, as far as students without technology, they would fall into that category and be able to come into school. And if they are at home and remote, we're making sure that both those curriculums align, so it's equitable.
Okay, and. Has, because of the limited amount of students we can have on the buses. Has there been any discussion in changing the start times of all the schools?
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, and in fact, we might not have a choice in, you know, once we, that's why we want to get that survey out, see how many. Students that are actually going to take the bus. We'll then see how many trips we have to make and then when the school start times will occur.
Okay, like going back to that four-tier model we had ages ago.
Possibly.
See, I didn't want this meeting to go without Paul hearing about start times and buses.
Paul, you're muted, but.
Believe me, that was one of the first things I brought up, Janice, to Superintendent Burkhead. Was going back as soon as we, we figured it, Andrea and I figured it out that there was only going to be one per seat. About three or four weeks ago and I brought it up to Superintendent Burkhead and said, you know what? Maybe we ought to go back to the four-tier model, either the high school, middle school start at, you know, seven fifteen. And then the other one starts at, you know, later on at like seven fifty. And then two elementaries at eight thirty and then two elementaries at nine. And then we could definitely do the buses with the amount of drivers we have in the buses we have. But that being said, there are, like Superintendent Burkhead said, there are other people out there that, that are saying, you know what? No to seven through 12. That's not what we want to do. I don't, I don't think. You know, so, but. That was brought up. We've talked about it quite a bit. So, yes.
In, was there a reason in the, the model to flip the AB cohorts? For the Thursday and Friday? Because I know one issue that parents had was to take into consideration childcare.
Mr. Burkhead.
Just can you clarify, do you mean like halfway through the year flip the morning and afternoon?
The model says that like the A, Group A goes Monday, Tuesday in the morning. And then Thursday and Friday, did it say they go in the afternoon or was I reading that wrong or were they?
No, you were reading that correctly because you go two days, you go two days full day. So it's not morning or afternoon, so. Full day would go Monday, Tuesday, full day cohort, be Thursday, Friday, full day.
Okay, all right. I thought you kind of did a hybrid of the two hybrids.
I may have explained it wrong, but I hope I clarified.
No, it is the way they presented on the, on the screen, I guess. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Is that it, Ms. Lindblom?
Well, I got a whole bunch more, but I think I'll just email.
Okay, next school committee member.
I have a whole list.
What do you want?
Let's go Nicole.
Thanks. Okay, I have a lot of questions and I'm not sure that the answers are, have been worked out yet, but. I don't know, I'm just going to throw them out there. For the orientation piece, do you want to have all grades have an orientation? Or are we just looking at elementary school level to do that orientation piece pre coming in?
That would be for all grades.
Okay. Do you, looking at the models, and I, I think we all know that Massachusetts has been very successful in the, that framework. So I think it's obviously smart to utilize it as you have done, you and the team. Is a week enough time in between phases? To go from one color to the next, to introduce kids into the buildings?
I don't think it's, one week is necessarily, that's why we're kind of going in with the orange for, it's actually six weeks. And then we're kind of deciding, I think the only way you would flip on a dime, if you will, is if we're dictated to go by the governor into red. So otherwise, we'd have enough time and a sample size, that's what we talked about, six weeks under the hybrid model, the orange hybrid model. Is to kind of work with, you know, our community and staff and see, is it working well? Can we go to yellow yet? Why or why not? That type of thing.
We could be on orange for a, a couple of weeks.
A month. The way this is set, the way this is set up, we're, our initial suggestion would be for the first six weeks and then. Assess and go from there, but it could be longer if it's working and we're not ready for yellow. And we're not, we're not going to red, so that, that's a possibility for sure.
I have a lot of concerns around kindergarten and. I, I just, I can't, I'm trying to rectify in my mind how it's. Just based on the restrictions that are needed to maintain health and safety. I just don't, I don't think it's a healthy introduction to school and I think it could even be detrimental to the social and emotional development. Of five and six-year-olds to come in with, obviously, the masks for seven hours is a huge task. It's a huge ask. Will they be able, I mean, I, you know, just a typical kindergarten day, will they be able to, I mean, if somebody has an accident. And needs help in the bathroom. If someone's crying for their mom in the first week because it's scary and it's a new building. How will they receive any emotional support from teachers while maintaining all of the safety protocols? You know, will they have a rug? They spend all that time on the rug doing morning meetings. And books, will they be able to use their laminated manipulatives and things that they. Put up around the classroom to teach them cues and how you function in a group in a classroom and all those social skills that are. Foundation of kindergarten. So like, I understand wanting to get them back first and that that information out there says that they're not the primary. Group of people that contract COVID, but. They live with people that are, you know, any adult that comes in contact with them. I just, I'm worried about sending the littles as guinea pigs.
No, thank you. It's, it's a good question and, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at it that way. I think there's also, you know, choice. And again, this is, you know, an opportunity for school committee and others feedback on that. We went with it for that reason. I think to answer your original question. You know, the, I guess the, the research about them staying home another year. You know, and not having that interaction in person with teachers. Yes, will the circle time be different for sure? Is the thought that in person would be better than on a computer? Yes. So I think that's kind of the, the, there's no right plan. It's just kind of our thought and you bring up great points and we've thought about those and debated them. But we also thought that these are, you know, it's going to be different no matter what we do. And at some point, this is one option for them to come back in, but again, it is an option that parents don't have to take.
All right. Looking at my notes. Somebody else wants to go ahead and ask a question. I, I have a couple more, but maybe I'll circle back around, but.
All right, Mike Long, any questions for Superintendent Burkhead?
Just a few. So I'll start with, with MCAS. So I know the MTA has been pushing DSC to try to not have MCAS for the year. Have districts been trying to do something similar. I have some serious concerns if we have to be remote that kids will. Be fully prepared for the MCAS test, especially the high school students where it's, you know, there's that pressure to pass in, in 10th grade.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. There was a long, there's nothing I've seen from the. Associations. We did get a document that said that MCAS for the spring of 21 was a go. I'm with you on that. I don't necessarily. Think with this way, all different schools or different models are being introduced, that it creates a level playing field. I also think there might be room for that to change. So that's the best answer I can give on that. That'll be the commissioner's decision and we need to best prepare our kids to learn and if we have MCAS or not.
Nope, that's fine. I didn't expect a full answer. Nope, that's fine. I I didn't expect a full answer. I just didn't know where it stood, but you know, it's something that we as a school committee should definitely keep an eye on as well. As you go through the year. Um, you talked about the training that teachers are gonna be able to do um. As part of those initial uh weeks. Um, is there some, I don't know how early we can get them into the schools, whether it's midway through eight uh August. If we have to wait till we get closer towards the end of August, September, is there anything we can provide them? Uh, virtually, so that they don't necessarily have to come into the schools too early, but we can just provide them the handouts so that they can go in and. You know, start preparing so they can hit the ground running. Um, when they do have to either come in or have that remote uh training.
I think that's a possibility that that we haven't got any direction or guidance from Dusty yet on the training piece. That's a question all superintendents have. What support are you gonna provide with that? So we'll wait and see with that. They have said, the commissioner has said that there'll be um support with training and documents and videos, and that's to to support us. So that should be forthcoming and then certainly we can share that with the staff as soon as we get it.
Okay. Um, and as we go through this, um, obviously, if we don't have kids coming in. For a couple of weeks, you know, we don't need the the cafeterias to have to be in the building. Um, are we still the expectation that our our sick unions will still receive full pay? Um, even if we're we're shortening the um the school year?
But our plan is to, first of all, we have to, we still have to feed children once the school year starts. So that might include pickup, delivery, that type of stuff. So I I don't, in that model, I don't see the cafeteria work is not working. They'll still be preparing meals. Um, and so I I think at this point, our plan is to feed all the children and be creative as we can. And make sure that all children, especially those that uh may need it or can't get access to it, get it. So I I think we will be planning on uh food delivery or pickup. That's some kind of option for all children.
Perfect. I know we're doing that in the spring. I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, negatively impact our staff as we roll this out. Um, sorry, two more questions. Um, I know we're talking about rolling out the new math curriculum this year. Is there any impact us um either delaying that a year or having our teachers have enough time to um. You know, get trained and and be ready to roll that out when students start in uh September?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer over to Ms. Arnold. I know she's already reached out to our um department chairs and uh principals to. Have a discussion around curriculum.
Hi, uh, Mr. Mr. Long, yes, we did do a lot of training for the new math program. Um, in the spring, we had a couple of virtual trainings in June. Um, the teachers have all their materials for the math program. And they've been working on them themselves all summer. When we go into the schools, when we go back into school and we have that Wednesday afternoon for planning. Collaboration, professional development, one of those Wednesdays per month, the each school level. So all elementaries can have PD on maybe the math program. Or we'll run a model like early release. So we'll still have that early release once a month. And that was focused on curriculum, professional development. So we'll still do that. And yes, uh Superintendent Burkhead mentioned that I'm getting together with department chairs and principals to. To put the structure around remote learning. What are the expectations? What will it look like? What, you know, we need to figure out the standards. We're, our our goal would be to mirror. A, the frameworks as much as we do with a curriculum we've already built, it would be to mirror that every day in school.
Thank you. And Superintendent Burkhead, you you talked about the buses in one of your slides. Um, do we have protocols in place for the vans?
Mr. Burkhead.
Yes, there's, they're stated in the protocols. They're very similar, the three feet distance. I don't know if Mr. Donlin has anything to add to that, but.
Yeah, we're gonna go by uh our partners, North River Collaborative, and basically, we're gonna follow their protocols. You know, three, three students to a van. Um, we're not sure how all of the out of district students are gonna be able to handle that. Um, but, you know, we'll we'll do the best we can uh come the fall when school opens. Hopefully, the two new vans and we should be able to have drivers, hopefully, to fill those vans to help out. So.
Thanks, Paul. And I'm I'm sorry, this will be the last question, um, at least for now. Um, as we go through and we define those cohorts for A and B as we come back. Is there some flexibility that we're gonna give families to say, you know, I prefer Monday, Tuesday versus Thursday, Friday? Or um try to allow some kids to be grouped together that are friends, just so that we're um. Kids might feel a bit more comfortable coming back to school. Knowing some of their friends have thrown in the same classroom as opposed to potentially having a whole bunch of kids that they don't know and feeling a little bit, little less comfortable. Because of um as part of this uh rollout to come back into school.
Mr. Burkhead.
Can you repeat that last part, Mr. Long? I broke up a little bit. I'm sorry.
Uh, yep, so um are we gonna allow some families to say, look, can my kid be with this kid? Um, or have both of these kids be in A or B as part of their cohort, just so that kids might feel a little bit more comfortable coming back versus. Not.
Yeah, I think, you know, I I think it would be wise to just stick to a a structure, because if you start taking requests. Um, it may create a slippery slope and then where does it end? I think if there's a medical reason or otherwise, uh. And we're trying to keep families together and that's gonna be tough enough. Like if we start expanding it to requests, it might become troublesome for scheduling and and just. Um, not possible. So I I'd be a little leery of that, uh, understanding that in our, in knowing that the kids need to build relationships. Um, I think that's part of the learning experience when they come to school is to do that as well.
Would we at least allow families to say, I want to be in cohort A versus cohort B based on, I I guess their family? Um, you know, it's easier for parents if their kids go Monday, Tuesday versus Thursday, Friday, or is that going to be um up to the school district to decide?
Well, my recommendation will will be to assign, because again, if we start flipping, we'll create, maybe create bus problems class. You know, who's in which class, scheduling problems, that kind of thing. But we are willing to deal with, and this is a very unique situation, as we know. It's all students and families individually. So if there's an individual case that makes sense, we'll certainly take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Did you say me, Pete?
I did.
Thank you. Um, well, first of all, I I want to thank you, Bill, in the task force. Uh, I mean, there's been so much hard work done. There've been forums with parents and all that. And I just want to say that, you know, we're, with this document being presented tonight, I mean. We're we're at the beginning of the beginning in this process that is going to be uh. Something that nobody's ever done before. Uh, we're all gonna work, have to work together, whether it's. Staff, parents, teachers, uh, students, uh. To to do the best we can and to and to to make a commitment to uh. Try to get better every day, which I know we will. And uh, you know, the the the. Most important part of what we're going to do is to do everything that is humanly possible to keep our children safe. And our teachers safe and our staff safe. Um, so it's going to take a lot of patience. And grace and cooperation on on the entire town uh's part. And uh, and then and we'll get through this. And uh, so, um. I mean, like everyone else, I have a million questions, but I'm I'm confident that the questions uh. I have right now, as we go forward before opening school.
I'll I'll be right up.
Will be answered. And uh, I did want to ask a couple of things on clarify, just to clarify. And the first one is, is that the the day that uh teachers show up, Bill. Um, for that three to ten day period, do we know when that will begin? Will that be the actual first date in our school calendar of school starting? Do we know that yet?
Mr. Burkhead.
Uh, yes, we do, Mr. Hayes. That would be the first day on the calendar. I believe it's August twenty sixth.
Okay.
But well, and now that we know it's will be ten days, we can start putting that calendar to uh together for the school committee.
In a parent. So the um, my other just point of clarification, when cohort. A is in the building and cohort B is is remotely learning and depending upon. You know, technology and how we resolve all those types of issues, will the remote people be getting the. Same instruction real time as the kids in the classroom are getting? In other words, will they be, will that, will that teacher be talking to and interacting with? Both kids in the school room and online, or will it be a little different or do we know yet?
Mr. Burkhead.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, it's a great question. Our goal is to, now that we know how to work Zoom works, and we've had several meetings where we have had people in. Uh, with us physically and at home zooming, I think we've got the technology to do that. So the goal would be, yes, that they'd be together. Now that.
Together in real time?
Yes.
Okay.
At least partly, uh, because remote learning is at home and kids may have to cut in and out, the goal would be certainly to have them there as long as possible, but yes, together.
Great. And then finally, I, am I correct in assuming that um. The buildings will be deep cleaned over the weekend as well?
You are, and they will, yes.
Great. And again, I just want to say, you know, we have a long way to go and not much time to get it done, but uh, we will get there. We will get there. And we have all the confidence in the world in you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any other uh comments or questions from the school committee?
I have a follow up question to um Mike Hayes's uh comments about the afternoon or the other, the other cohort cohort that would be remote learning. Would we use a little of that time for the specials and how or and if not, how are the specials gonna be worked into the schedule?
We haven't got to the details of that yet, but you know, they certainly will be worked in depending on the students' needs and the classrooms' needs. Um, again, with technology that may be virtually, if that teacher's in the building or if they're not able to return to work, can they help out remotely? So there's a way to do that with the class and there's also a way on the Wednesdays to add additional support for all students, including those with um special needs.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Um, have you, did the group discuss uh temperature checks upon entering the buildings or anything like that? Staff or students?
No, the, yeah, I'm sorry, the um, the commissioner has said that um, that's not recommended because of false, possible, poss- false positives. Um, so at this time, he has said that he's committed to testing possibly uh for for the COVID, not the temperature checks. Uh, for staff, potentially, you know, maybe for students, but he has mentioned staff as a priority to look into when testing becomes more available. And I think that's, that's a good idea. Um, but as far as temperature checks. Um, according to the commissioner, that's not gonna be a recommendation and that the recommendation would be that, you know, we do a a verbal check and. Teachers know their kids and their parents help us with this. And if, you know, the kids aren't feeling good, they keep them home. That's gonna be a huge emphasis for us that we, we need that support.
So I just scenario wise, like if we say we start fall sports and a player on a team. Like a youth sport team in situ it contracts COVID or the apparent even. Those kids all go to all four elementary schools and maybe have siblings at gates. Does that, what triggers the shutdown or or going back in a phase, you know, I mean, cause. I don't think it takes much to have us have to pull back like that. I mean, there's a couple of different scenarios, you know. I have a friend who teaches in town and they live in another town. They have three kids. And that go to that school system and the wife teaches in another school system. So if a student in her class gets COVID. And her class shuts, does her husband's class at gates have to close? And her three kids that they're. You know where I'm going. So I I'm just like, it's very overwhelming, I think, to, um, I don't know how we manage it. I just, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I'm worried that we're, I I love that the slower approach and I'm, I'm just not sure if it's not. Slow enough even. I mean, have we considered half day versus full day? I know it's still, that doesn't really take away the exposure piece, though. I mean, if you're in the building and you're in that classroom, you're all in there. Schools seem to just have that natural germ tendency anyway. So I don't know why, but, well, I guess it's the people. But I just don't know how we manage this. It's it's quite overwhelming. And I feel for our families and I feel for our staff. And I know from the surveys, we have staff that are very nervous about. Returning and, you know, that my case is questioned about, is a teacher gonna be simultaneously teaching half the class remote? As well as in person. So that, I mean, if you're, if you're teaching to the Zoom, can't move too far. I think it's, this is just such a huge challenge. There's so many more questions than answers. So I'm not trying to put it on you, Bill, to give us every answer, but I think these are the questions on parents' minds and. What is going to, I I feel like as a district to move forward, you need to know how many kids will be there and how many staff will be there. So it's like a chicken and an egg. But if if people don't feel safe, they're not gonna tell you the kids are coming. So we, I don't know what has to happen first to say, this is what we're doing. Are you in to families? You decide. And staff and, you know, we'll work with you. Or do you want to know how many people are coming so that you can find the right? The best model to fit how many? I mean, maybe we only have one third of students return. Well, you have more flexibility, you'll have more space. Those kids will have a different experience than if seventy five percent of kids want to return. So I don't know. Again, I'm just throwing out theoreticals. I don't have the answers. I. I'm looking to you for those.
Yeah, and they're all great questions. And I think, you know, we we've all asked these questions and, you know, um, I think by by defining a model. We can start answering those questions based on the model, you know, and I think, you know, like I said, I'll be sending out the survey, get those numbers. So I do think the chicken egg part is you need a plan for people to decide whether they're coming back or not, or they uh can come back. Or if parents are gonna send their children now that we have one, um, we can send, start collecting that information. You know, and then it becomes a puzzle. How many staff are coming back? How many students are coming back? At which, how many schools do we have to, you know, um. Move things around? Uh, does it adjust our curriculum in any way? All great questions, but I think Mr. Hayes said it best. It's that it's really the first step, um, in a lot more steps. Should have to happen. Um, but at least getting the plan out there, again, knowing, and I told our our administrative team this today, that we're gonna get bombarded with a lot of questions tonight. But that's a healthy thing. It's served us right up until this point. And now that we have a plan and I'm already reading the check. Back questions and writing pretty much all of them down, um, to make sure that we address them. They're all legitimate, they're all important. Um, and they all need to be addressed. So there's no question that's silly or or not important. So all your questions are great. Um, we don't have answers right now. We have a lot more than we had a week ago, though, I will say that. So I think that's the the good news. And again, there's no right plan. There's only what's best for us and in every family, uh, which I do like about all plans, no matter what, where you live. Has an option to fully remote if they're not satisfied with the plan. Our goal is to get everybody to that point and to listen to feedback. And to make sure that people are comfortable. Um, and if they're not meeting them where they're at, making sure that they get a a solid education.
Are we waiting for more uh information, hopefully, from the state on what protocols would be? What would trigger a school to have to shut down or what the threshold is for going back and being in, you know. Going into the red or?
Yeah, it's a good question. They have sent out protocols for that. And the earlier question uh does create kind of a spider web on tracing and that type of stuff. When uh they do have examples and I can get that, you know, out there, it's um, you know, there's a very specific process for identifying if a student gets it. Teacher. Or gets uh or symptoms, should I say, and there's another process if if someone tests positive. It does not go as far as to give a specific count or number on when the district should shut down or a school. Uh, it refers you to work with your local board of health. So, you know, I don't love that idea that they didn't have a, that we don't, maybe they will. They don't have a set criteria yet, so that's something they have asked us to do.
I think the general criteria that I've heard from the World Health Organization, CDC, before their second round of recommendations is, you know, if, if community spread gets over 5%, you know, we've got some serious problems in, in situat. I mean, I think right now it's at 1.7, and, you know, it would seem, and the governor I know said today, they're, they are concerned about positive tests going up a little bit right now, so, but it would seem to me that the general principle is if you're under 5%, you, you can make things work. If it's over, you know, you're in, you're in big trouble as a community, so we'll have to wait and see.
Any other questions by school committee members?
I have another question. Sorry, Mike, did you want to go? I've been. How does this, the AB cohort model work in the high school? With the students not really as, like, you know, when they get to the high school, they're all kind of like, they scatter to all the, whatever classes they sign up for. So how is that going to be worked out?
I think the schedule would be, it's a great question. Like any schedule, it's going to be complex and probably different than it has been, but whatever classes we can offer, they would have, so that group would follow their same class schedule during the day, and the students that are home would mirror that virtually. So I don't think it would be that different. Certainly will be different in the elementaries and middle schools and how they operate that. With students at that age also being able to access online learning a little easier and work done virtually a little bit easier, I think that would be kind of a part of that schedule and curriculum.
Any other questions, school committee?
Yes, I have two, more question than a comment. So, Bill, it sounds like in the near future, we're going to have to relook at the school calendar and potentially vote the first, first day of school, at least for students. Just so the families are aware, would that be after the 10th, once we submit our final document, or would we potentially look at doing that next week or later this week?
I think we could do it either. My recommendation, since the document's due on the 10th, might be to have another meeting on, let's say, the 6th of August to share, kind of like I'm doing tonight, the draft of the final plan to get feedback from the school committee, and others to make any adjustments necessary before sending it in. We could conceivably do it at that meeting, or we could do it on the 10th.
Yeah, well, Mike, we'll talk about that at the end of this meeting as well.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that we, we set the right expectation in the community because it sounds like, you know, we're mid, early to mid-September as opposed to before Labor Day. So I just want to make sure that we, we start getting that out there sooner rather than later. And then the comment that I wanted to make, I think Nicole and Mike both make, make a good point. I mean, at the end of the, at the end of the day, this is a community impact. We have some families that want to go back to school. We have some teachers who want to be back in the classroom and can, and we have some people who can't. But for the people that are able to go back into the schools, you know, this is something that we need to work together as a community to make sure that we, we don't spread this any further and that we work together so that, you know, if someone has family coming in from out of state, or, you know, they go somewhere, that they work with the district to make sure that we don't, at the end of the day, you know, potentially spread something. I mean, we, we shouldn't be tracking families as a district, but, I mean, if we want to, if we have families who want to put their kids into the school, you know, it's, to me, it's the responsibility of the schools to give them the education that they need and that they deserve, but at the same time, it's the community responsibility. And me as a parent, you know, I fully expect myself to be doing the same thing to make sure that we don't, you know, negatively impact our staff or our students who are in there and potentially expose them when, when really we shouldn't. I know Governor Baker just came out with a new travel restriction that goes into place next week, and I know things are going to be changing day over day and, you know, week over week, but it's just something that we need to make sure that we, as a school committee and as a district, continue to preach out, but we as a community also work together to make sure that at the end of the day, we keep our community safe. We keep our kids safe, we keep our staff safe. We continue to push towards, you know, ideally, open, reopening our schools at, at some point in the near future, whether it's this year or next year or two years down the line.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments or questions from the school committee?
Just one real quick comment. Has the, the restart team looked at, the hybrid model doesn't seem to, with having staff in the buildings five days or four and a half days if they're doing that PD day and the cleaning in the middle, I just, I'm worried about their exposure in the buildings, being there basically full-time. I didn't, I didn't know if they had, you had all looked at models with them kind of staying with their cohort and being in the building two days and then remote two days with their same class. I know that doesn't really, that wouldn't work with the half the class remote, half the class in-person version, but is there another version where teachers get a little bit more protection? Or distance at least from being in the building so much?
I actually think this model was, was the, one of the few that had a break or a day in between cohorts. For example, the week on, week off, you've got kids for a full week, the next cohort comes in, you get kids the next full week. The AM/PM model that we looked at, again, a group of kids in the morning, group of kids in the afternoon, every day. So that was, that was an issue there. So, you know, we, we like this for that reason, where it gave a break for exposure to children between cohorts, time for cleaning. You know, so that's built in, and it's one of the few models that had it. So that's a reason why many people like that part of it as well.
Okay. So Wednesdays, the teachers would be remote, even if they're doing PD and things, or?
No, Wednesday, the teachers would be there, but the students wouldn't.
Okay. And I, I just had a quick question about allergies and stuff with all kids, you know, allergies are such a huge concern and, and with eating lunch in the classrooms, is there any recommendations on how that's done safely? Maybe I missed it in some things that have come flying out from the state, but just a little microcosm of all of this that's very impactful for families.
Yeah, you know, absolutely. That's a huge concern, and we've addressed that today, actually. You know, it's our thought that we would try to get creative for lunch and not have the kids eating their class. So we're looking at outdoor space, we're looking at, you know, we can use the cafeteria to eat, we just can't serve, you know, the hot meals anymore through there. So principals are going back to the schools, looking at those models. I know, again, someone has brought it up, we're looking at also tents, the large tents you see at, you know, the restaurants, so that we have protection from the sun and rain for possible outdoor dining for our staff and students. So we're looking to get creative, just to find a way to get students out of the classroom altogether, and then, once we do that, certainly whatever model we have, wherever the children eat and the adults eat, will also address allergies and how we handle where those children, how those children would be protected.
I guess I, I have other questions about, you know, the middle school and how this will look with project-based learning, and then at the high school and labs, and I, maybe those details just haven't been, but I'm just, sometimes I feel like I tend to appear concerned about the littler because my kids are little, but I, I have given thought to older, the older students and, and how their learning will look as well. I think obviously we feel like they're more mature and they'll handle the distancing and the masks better, but, you know, there's a lot of social, emotional, you know, what if one of their friends gets, I don't know, it's just so, it's a lot, as I've been saying. It's just, what if their teacher gets sick? You know, how does that, you can't learn well if you're worried about your classmates, you know, having a quarantine for two weeks and they're getting like sucked out of the building and their home, just, and that's even just the best case scenario if they're just quarantining out of a potential exposure, never mind someone in, actually, close to them gets it, so. Right? I'm done now.
I think they're all, I think they're all good points.
Come on, Mike.
Just to answer the other part, I think we need our professionals, our educators and our department chairs and coordinators to assist. This is a new way of learning. And so I'm not going to decide that. I need our professional educators to decide those, that curriculum, and we still have to do that. That's why there's time built in for the 10 days before. We need all the time we can get, and then the Wednesdays to, you know, lay this curriculum out and work with our professionals to, you know, to decide what that looks like. So that has not been decided. We want our, our educators' input on that, obviously, to decide what that looks like and get their feedback on, you know, the model and, you know, how learning looks, and then the curriculum and how it fits in the model and the model learning.
Yeah. So we are not taking a vote on this today, Peter? We're not, we don't vote.
This is a preliminary plan to DESI by Friday, and we will ultimately be voting August 10th. No, we have to vote before August 10th, actually, with the plan that we're deciding to go with.
I just feel like it's so unfair, school committees, like we're all being put in this place, we're, we're just signing people's health.
Right.
We're talking about people's lives, not masks. You know, I mean, those things matter, obviously, but, I mean, nothing matters more than our families and our community. And here we are, we're literally talking about, is it safe to send these people and children into this building? I don't know. And I don't like having that weight on me, but I'm not sleeping over this. I'm sure none of you are either, parents and school committee members, too. Like, we're making a mass, this is the biggest decision we'll make as a, a school committee. I mean, I'm sorry.
That's what happens when, that's what happens when there's no national leadership.
Yeah.
You know, I-
I'm going to stop there, the political talk there, bud. That's safety, that's safety talk.
Yeah, safety is right.
I mean, the beginning of this presentation, you know, Bill gave us what the American Academy of Pediatrics and CDC recommend for kids, and, and I don't think that's anything that we don't know already. And the problem is, like, we all know that's what they need, but is sending them back to school in a hybrid model the safest? I mean, that's, this is the horrible decision that we have to make, is, you know, we know they need to get back, but is it really what's best? You know, I'm, I'm kind of skeptical of the transmission rate data that comes out, that's, that's been out with 10 and, kids 10 and under, because they really haven't even been together, you know, I think, long enough. You know, they weren't together, you know, in when this whole thing began. So what do we really know about that? And I, I think of when this, when this did begin back in March, when, you know, we had somebody at the high school, and it was like the panic that you had, you know, my kids were coming home, so-and-so, you know, traveled to Italy and, you know, and they're like all concerned, and they're concerned, like, oh, now the teacher may have been exposed. And that was like right in the beginning. You know, I mean, now the kid's going to be kind of numb to what really is going on, like the concern. I think we all are kind of, you know, some people, you know, people becoming complacent with their mask-wearing because it's, it's, this has just gone on for so long, and it's, I don't know.
Drive by TK's over the weekend?
I, I, I don't go to restaurants. I can't take that risk. I work with-
Neither do I, but just driving by, it was-
Yeah.
Amazing.
I know somebody who was on the vineyard, and there was no, he said there was hardly anybody wearing masks. So I think we're going to see an increase in infection rate. So where does that lead, you know, what happens in another month when I feel like that, that number's going to increase as the state opens up? Are we, is this decision going to be taken out of our hands at some point? You know, because of the infection rate?
It may, but the bottom line is, if that does not happen, it will be our responsibility to make that decision. And, and again, what's best for our entire community?
I think it's important that we're continually reaching out to the community through these surveys. I mean, it's not something we, we poll in the middle of July and then say, okay, let's make a decision two months, three, two months later. I mean, the district has done a great job of reaching out on a regular basis, keeping the district updated, and, I mean, at least allowing families to come back and, and respond. I mean, obviously, having close to 300 people at one point in this meeting is, is a good sign of that, and as a community, we'll have to make a decision on what we do and what's best. And ideally, the governor doesn't come out at the end of August and say, no, no going back to school, period, but, you know, we have to be prepared for, you know, the best scenario for our students and our staff.
Right.
No, I do have one staff question for you. And I'm going to preface this with, I'm not trying to replace anybody. It's, it's more, if we do have issues, you know, we have 100 kids that want to come back into the school district and one teacher that wants to, do we have the ability? I know a lot of teachers out of work to add in either, you know, long-term subs or something along those lines so that we can support the kids that want to go into the classroom and work with our existing staff to, to make sure that we, we can support kids and members of our community who do want to be in the classroom? And I repeat, not replacing, just augmenting what we have to support the, the community demand, if that's what it is.
You know, I think, well, we obviously considered that, and that's why we need to get surveys out as soon as possible and determine where our staff's at, where our families are at, and it'll then become a, you know, when we have some numbers in, will be, help us better define what learning will look like. I don't have the answer yet because I don't know all those ratios, but certainly that's something we need to get as soon as possible. And, you know, substitutes are, are going to be tough to find. I know that's been a question on some minds, and, you know, we're, we're going to recruit the best we can when people are out, just like we normally would. I know substitutes are already tough to find, so that's certainly a concern for me.
If we did have a teacher that just normally got sick, and they were a teacher that were in the schools and their, their kids, you know, now have to be remote learning for the day, I mean, I don't need an answer now, but I just want to make sure that we had some kind of good communication process with the district to say, hey, your kids are not coming to school today because your teacher got the cold, you know, general day-to-day sickness that we're all going to get. I mean, it happens, but just making sure that we're able to reach out to the community and the appropriate people in a timely manner so that someone that's sitting by the bus or gets on the bus and goes to school and there's no teacher there.
I think it's a good question. We'll, we'll have a plan for in-person students, you know, to, to accept them and not keep them home. So I, I think that will continue to happen, and we have to define what that looks like. But I don't think, if one teaches out, we'd have to have those kids stay home, you know?
Yeah, and, and I know that's more procedural than what we're trying to accomplish tonight. It just, we could go down a rabbit hole of this stuff, and it, like Peter said, I don't want to be here till tomorrow, but, you know, just making sure that we sort of consider something like that.
All right. Anything else?
Just one, one more point, if I may, Pete, is that-
You're in the dark, Mike.
I know, I know. There's nothing I can do about it.
All right.
It looks better this way, but, I mean, it's, I am extremely concerned about, obviously, the health and safety of our children, but equally so with our staff and teaching staff, and, and we're not going to do, I mean, working conditions won't have to be part of impact bargaining. And, and, and we will listen to all of our teachers and staff concerns, and I just want to make that clear and that to, not only to the staff, but to the town, is that we owe our staff a safe work environment, and we're going to do everything we can to ensure that's the case.
Yeah.
Anyone else? All right, I, you guys asked most of my questions. I said, I guess, you may have already answered, answered this one, Bill. The elementary and high school model, I know that you referenced, Janice asked a similar question, but in terms of the cohorts, specifically for sixth grade, has there been discussion? Because these kids will be going to a new school, and for the first time, all four schools would be, all four grades, or all, all fifth grades across the district would be coming together. Is there any discussion? I know cohorts, it's going to be complicated, but is, I would just like to comment that it might be worthwhile to consider grouping perhaps two schools together, for example, Jenkins and Wampatack, or whatever, just as these kids are coming to a new school and meeting new kids that potentially could create a, an agreeable cohort. I'm thinking maybe it may-
could create a, an agreeable cohort. I'm thinking maybe it may, make the bus routing easier as well. Just a thought. I don't need a comment on it. I know there's a ton of cohorts. And then add to, um, Janice's question about the high school, for example, if there's a, an AP English class and we're only having in-school classroom time for A through M, how does that rest of the students access that class if there's only one section of it?
Well, I, I think in all the models, we have only a partial number of the students in the classroom. So I think that is a given so we can accommodate the six-foot distancing. So the other students would be remote for that class. Also in AP, there's, you know, there's a lot of assignments, reading and that kind of thing. So I think, back to the original point of the ideal situation, I know that this is something that we'll have to hash out and get the teachers, um, to work with us and support this and get their input on it, is how do we make in-school learning and students at home learning in the same class possible? You know, teachers like to get up to the board, they like to present and that kind of thing. Uh, it is doable, it'll be different. But again, it's the best way to, to not bring everybody back into the building to accomplish that. So I don't have the specifics on that, you know, I just know that it can be done. We've done it in, in our groups of meetings. Teaching is obviously very different. So I want to hear again from the, the professionals that do it. And again, that's why we brought, reached out to the department chairs and coordinators to kind of start getting input on what that might look like and how best to do that. And then the, uh, the principals and assistant principals will be working on scheduling and, and how that works and the details for each building.
I think that was really, yet again, we could, we could ask questions for days. This is just the preliminary step. I know you, you and your team will continue to work hard between now and August 10th and thereafter. So I don't want to get bogged down in all the one-off questions. So I'm all set. I appreciate you responding to all the questions from the committee at this point in time. I have been, or we've all been noticing the, uh, the questions in the chat. I just want to, I want this to come across professionally and in good faith. All of these questions are being reported to the task force or will be reported to the 2020 reopen task force. Unfortunately, right now, we just, as you see, we have, I don't know how many 30 or 40 questions. We just can't answer all those. They're very specific questions, but I want you, everyone to know that these questions have been recorded and it will be brought up at the next task force meeting. Each and every one of these questions. I wish we could open it up and have Mr. Burkhead answer all these, but it's just unfortunate not the appropriate forum at this potential, at this particular time. But what I also want to say is I, I very much appreciate the record amount of participation. I think we approached 285 participants, which shows obviously we have tremendous interest in this particular topic, as we should. I want everyone to know that the superintendent, his team, members of the community, uh, and other experts are all involved in this and, and coming up with the right plan for, for our teachers, our students and our district and our town. With that being said, it is time for comments, statements or questions from the public. I'm going to probably struggle with this a little bit right now. Um, just be aware that if you do ask a question, we may just hold it under advisement, um, and potentially report it to the, uh, 2020 reopen. The other thing I wanted to mention that for those who are concerned about releasing their name and address on a public or in the Zoom, you can just state your first name and one of the schools that your children attend or the school in which you teach, if you happen to be, um, a staff member. What I'd like to do is, actually, I'm struggling here right now. What did you have the best way to do it? If you have a, I guess if you have a question right now, uh, and you find it appropriate to ask at this particular point in time, we will leave it open for 10 minutes for public statements, questions, and just let it be known that if we don't respond to your answer, it will be noted and you will, it will be taken under advisement. Start to figure out how to, how to start that. If you could unmute yourself and ask a question.
Peter, there's a, a hand raise feature that you could use.
Okay.
The reaction button at the bottom, if people hit reaction, they can raise their hand and then you can see who has a question.
Perfect. I just hope, I don't know how I can see all 200 participants. Maybe it will come to the forefront or maybe someone can help me.
Good point. Do you want to just take questions from the chat or do you want to save those to process?
I think those are, those have been noted already, so let's just leave those where they are. And again, this is in no way to say these are not important questions. It's just not the best format for us to answer all these. As I said, we'll be here until tomorrow. There are going to be additional forums, public forums for these questions to be considered. So if you have a comment or question that you believe is appropriate at this point, please hit the reaction key and raise your hand and hopefully someone could just notify me if I'm not.
Peter, um, it's Ellen. If you look at your participants in the bottom, um, of the screen, you'll see the quantity. If you select that, a participant list will come up on the right side of your screen. If someone raises their hand, you'll see their hand.
I have one hand raised right now.
Jennifer O'Neill has her hand raised.
Thank you.
I just, I just did that to see if it would work. So I had my hand raised for you.
Now you have to ask a question.
Yeah, ask a question.
Jennifer O'Neill, uh, Gettet Road, Cituit High School. Um, I just have a couple of questions about band, but I did send an email to Mr. Thomas, so he'll probably answer it. But will band be allowed to participate outdoors? And will it still be considered a for-credit course? That's based on what I read in the DESI requirements that Nicole sent me.
I was, Jen, I was reading the guidelines for band as well, and it does, does say that band and chorus, if they're outside in like 10 feet apart with masks. Uh, I mean, hopefully they, they can work, you know, figure that out. And, you know, weather permitting too.
Right, because woodwinds and brass instruments are not allowed to be indoors currently. So for the majority of students, that's our band. And what will happen with the grading if they're unable to, if they're in school for their two days, if they're unable to participate? So like I said, I already sent that to Mr. Thomas. So I, I guess that was just my question because Nicole forced me to
Thank you, Jen.
Ask one. All right, thanks.
If I can see if anyone else has their hand up, but we'll see if I can figure it out.
Great question, Jen.
Does anyone see anyone, any other hands raised?
Pete, I do think that when someone raises their hand, they get put towards the top of the list, right under your name. Katie Miller has her hand raised and it's right underneath you. So they will be.
Thank you. Katie Miller.
Yes, hi. Um, my son is at Cushing School and I'm also a member of the task force. I was wondering if someone could speak a little bit about, PPEs and cleaning and do you have enough masks? Do you have enough cleaning supplies? I know I can't find Clorox wipes anywhere. So if someone could just speak, to the supplies and then, and if you're ready for that, and then also air quality and ventilation in the schools. I'd love to hear a little bit more about the environment, um, that we're putting our children in.
Okay, Katie, did you say you're on the task force?
I am on the task force, yes.
Thank you for serving. Um, I think this question was, this question was, uh, asked previously at our last meeting and, uh, Mr. Donlin, are you still on?
Yes.
Could you just give a brief overview of the supplies that have been ordered?
Sure. Um, children's masks, um, adult masks, uh, nurse mask, PPE for nurses, the, the yellow coats, you know, shields. We've got, uh, 12, we have six, six fogging machines with Clorox 360 to go around to all the schools. We ordered six more. We have, I want to say 15 to 20 fogging machines handheld for our buses and vans. We have 400 gallons of, uh, hand sanitizer, of which 200 is already arrived, 200 is still on back order. We, that's about what I can remember for PPE. I mean, I can give you a more detailed list. And we typically would try to do three-month supply based on what Kelly uh, took for our student population, um, and what we would possibly need. So Kelly, I'm telling, Kelly Roach, our nurse leader, gave us a list probably three, uh, month and a half ago. So we've been ordering since then. As far as air quality in each one of the rooms, we have unit ventilators in all of our schools except for the new middle school, and I can talk about that afterwards, but basically what we do is we grease oil and filter, um, at the beginning before school starts. And this year we are going to do that, um, probably in August. We've already greased oiled and, um, and done what we need to do to tune them up every year. We are going to put in the new filters in, uh, August. Uh, I had a meeting with my successor in Bill and Bob Dylan today, and we talked about moving that up. We typically would do it in December or February during the break. Uh, we're looking at maybe moving that up again. We talked about opening the dampers, um, at the elementary schools where the, there's only really one elementary school with really old, um, unit ventilators, but they're in working order and that would be Haveli. Cushing's is new, newer. Jenkins is, you know, 20 years old now. I mean, that's now probably considered old. Wampatack's is new, that was done in 2012, so their unit ventilators are new. The high schools was done at the same time as Jenkins. Those unit ventilators are 20 years old. And obviously in the TLC, both of those, along with Haveli. We looked at the MIRV factor on a lot of our, um, filters. And we had determined that the lower MIRV factor allows more fresh air to come in. So we don't want to stop. The higher MIRV factor stopped a lot of the particles from the outside world coming in. So I think we want to be lower. That's everything we've read. So we're going with a lower MIRV factor. I know that, I'm not really too sure what MIRV means, but it allows a lot more air coming in from the outside. So that's what we're going to do. Windows, obviously, um, and we're going to, uh, open the windows, just like we're going to do on buses for as long as we possibly can to circulate the air. We've read, um, where fans is probably not a good idea in case somebody was in the room that was maybe showing some symptoms, maybe it's just a cold and we're going to move that around. Would rather, um, not do that. Um, right now, we haven't got guidance that says not to do that, but with thinking that way. But basically trying to get as much circulation as we possibly can into each individual classroom. I hope that answers your question, Katie.
That was good. Thank you, Paul.
Can I add to that, Chairman Gates?
Sure.
Thank you, Paul. It was comprehensive. We do have a list of all those materials that we, we can add to our, um, final plan for sure. Any other thing is that we'll have an outside consultant come into all our buildings and do air quality checks and, and release that information and take any recommendations from that before we, uh, let anybody back in the schools.
Yeah, and actually two of them. Um, Bob Lee is Mike, Mike probably, did you go to school with Bob Lee? Bob Lee is our HVAC guy also, and we're going to bring in a, uh, what they call a hygienist, which is a, an air quality guy from, he lives here in town also. So we'll have those on, uh, maybe with Doc, uh, with, uh, Superintendent Burkhead in one of the parent meetings so we can talk about that. Or we'll either, sometime before the, uh, beginning of school, he'll, he will give a presentation on that. He's agreed to do that. So we'll take a look at all that.
Great, thank you. All right, uh, we have a couple more questions. Uh, Liz Coffey, you're up.
Hi, um, Liz Coffey, Titten Road. I have students at Jenkins and Cushing. So my question's around the primary focus students. Um, so you mentioned that they would have orientation first. And so I'm wondering, does this mean that their schedule would be separate from the A and B cohorts? Or would be, would they be included in the A and B cohorts?
Mr. Burkhead, would you mind?
Yeah, they would be included. Uh, they may go full day, every day, however, instead of being remote on those off days, it'd be in person those days, four days possibly with Wednesday off for everybody.
Okay, so, so it's possible that the, that those students would be in the building, physically in the building more often?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, one more. Uh, Peter Blandino.
Hello, um, I'm a teacher at Cituit High School. Uh, my question has to do with how this plan would respond to, students showing symptoms once they're in the building. Will they have to be isolated? Will they be with the nurse? And if so, during cold and flu season, uh, the nurse, will, will one nurse be sufficient to deal with, um, this kind of influx of students to, to take care of for extended periods of time?
Mr. Burkhead, would you care to respond or should we add to our list?
No, I, I think I got the most of it. He broke up a little bit for me, but I think I got the gist of the question. It's a real good question. Um, we, we've been working with our principals and our nurse leader and eventually the nurses on, uh, you know, the Department of Education requires an isolation room, a, a safe space for students with symptoms to isolate. And so we will have that in, um, each of our schools. You know, we will have a plan for triage if there's multiple cases in the same day or same. That will come with our nurse leader. It's not defined yet, but that is a question that we've taken, took under advisement and are getting ready for. But the isolation rooms are mandated and we will have them at each building, a safe space for students with symptoms to isolate until their parents can pick them up or they can be taken home.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's going to conclude the, uh, public comment section. Again, I appreciate all of you understanding, I guess, our protocols and what we're trying to accomplish here. Uh, we do anticipate there will be additional public forums for you to participate. Um, all of these chat questions and comments that have been, submitted to us have been noted and will be submitted to the task force for their review. I apologize if we can't give all answers to our questions to all of the answers, but, um, hopefully you can understand. Uh, any other questions or comments from the school committee at this point regarding the reopen plan?
Lieutenant Burkhead, all these questions will be on the, the task force website that we have, the questions and the answers.
Yes, we can come up with a frequently asked question document.
I just want to make sure that.
With that, it's my understanding that all these questions have been copied, I've got reports, I think Chairman Gates has said that, so we can share them to the, uh, task force to start addressing them.
I just want to make sure that they do get addressed and the, the community gets the answers that they were looking for. At least.
Yeah. Mike, they may not, they may not get exact or direct answers necessarily, but they will be taken under advisement by the search.
Right.
Okay. That's, that's kind of the expectation that we're, that we're setting. But there, every concern and question is a valid one. We just need to figure out how best to, to, to monitor that and to respond. So that's kind of how we're moving going forward. You can, as, as Superintendent Burkhead said, he's always available. Uh, you could also, the best place is the 2020 reopen. You could also, the best place is the 2020 reopen email, which is 2020reopen@sit.org. That's the best place for you to submit your comments or questions. So we will move on.
I just have one last comment, Peter, if it's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to kind of reiterate something that Mike Hayes had said about, I mean, this is a public health disaster, and I think we should be doing more to lobby whoever we need to at the state level. We need a lot more. I just don't think we're getting enough from higher ups and state and federal government, so I don't know what we need to do. But I'm gonna look into it, because I just think we really, this isn't, this is just not really fair to districts and employees and parents. It's just so much to put on everybody's shoulders with a pandemic. It's just, I don't know. That's it.
I agree. I had one question, Superintendent Burkhead. You did mention that the remote learning is going to be different from what it was in the spring. Just wanted to comment a little bit out. I know that there's been some talk today about, I guess I'm gonna call it co-teaching in the sense that in-person teaching and distance learning would be accomplished at the same time. But is, is that the reality, do you think? Or will we really have just to focus on remote distance learning, similar to what we had in the spring, but more rigorous?
Well, I think it has to change dramatically. You know, again, I was not specifically here. I read the feedback. Our principals have shared it with me. I think it's consistent across the state that we were thrown into this situation, you know, and worked well to get a plan in place on the fly. I don't think it's ideal. We've had a lot of time to get input, feedback to do it better. We have planning time. We have additional days. We have time worked into our, well, you know, we need the teachers' help developing this curriculum and our curriculum chairs and coordinators. They'll play a major role in what this looks like. They're boots on the ground in the classes. So I think we need to take advisement from them and our principals and our assistant superintendent on the way the curriculum will be delivered. There's two issues that we have to face right now. How will it be delivered remotely and in the hybrid model? What is the best way to do that? How much staff will we have in our school versus not in our school? How many students in our school versus not in our school? So kind of all those situations need to be taken care of first. So I think the first thing that we'll do is send out a survey to our, to our staff and to our families to get some of those questions identified. And then we can start working with our staffs, our staff, excuse me, to, you know, identify what's best for our kids in the model, you know, we end up using in the specific final plan that we have. You know, and I will also, you know, I just want to give a shout out if I'm not able to at the end, just to, you know, all the great questions that are being asked. I just want to reiterate that they're very helpful. We had as many to help develop this initial plan. And so I'm confident that these questions can be answered. And I think you mentioned it, Mr. Long had asked the question that if your question specifically isn't answered, it will be incorporated into a plan. For example, you know, there's a question about band. Wherever we fall in that, whether, you know, we offer certain sections, if it's outside exclusively, that will may, will be in the plan, so it may not be answered, it'll be answered and reflected in the plan. So otherwise, those questions that we don't see that find their way in the plan, my suggestion to the task force and steering committee will be that we have a frequently asked question section that we can start devising now that we have a plan for those questions where someone can go and just kind of pop in so that we, we answer them and people are satisfied with their answers. And then we start making that question pool smaller and smaller and smaller. And again, back to the community model, you know, everyone has a different perspective. Everyone has a different thought. They're all important to us, you know, again, on this, on this model. And again, it's not the perfect model, but it's one we used a lot of information to come up with, and I think we will continue to do that. So everyone that's listening tonight, and the turnout was awesome. I'm very impressed, as usual, from Situate. And, you know, I understand the anxiety and, and, you know, I'm human too, and I'm feeling that. And just know that we're all gonna do our best to continue to get voice and reason involved in this and come up with what's best for our, our school community. Please note, this isn't the final plan. It's the first plan. We've got not a lot of time, but we do have, you know, till the kids come back, about six weeks now, maybe even seven weeks. So we have time to do this right, and things change regularly. So what we're talking about now may be very different than what we're talking about at the next school committee meeting. So I don't want to rush things. Let's go slow or go fast. Let's take the input and continue to work. But I do, I do want to thank the community. I'm, I'm very impressed with the turnout for all of the meetings and for all of the feedback. And, you know, in the respectful, in the respectful way it done, it's done, because I understand it's with, with, it's with emotion. Passionate, wherever you're coming from, you are living this, and we all are living this as we go. So we just want to, we want to do it right. So feedback and input, we wouldn't be able to do that. So I just wanted to share that with the community that's here tonight, and thank you all.
Great. Thank you again for all your hard work. I think it's, you know, a tough challenge, but I think we have the right people on it, and as you said, it's probably gonna change pretty regularly. So we're gonna do our best with, with what we can. All right, moving on to the next item, agenda item, subcommittee updates. Ms. Arnold on diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Thank you, Chairman Gates. So Nicole Brandalini, school committee member, Nicole Brandalini and I are the co-chair of the district subcommittee, the school committee subcommittee for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we just wanted to give you an update on the work to date. We, we have recruited about fifty-three people so far for our committee. That's what I have definitively on my list, but today I got a few more requests to join, which is great. We are really trying to make sure that it is an inclusive committee. We want all perspectives, and we're trying to build a culture of respect for all perspectives. And the principals recruited parents and students by tapping into their school councils. So I know that was a question on how do we, how did we develop this committee? Who, how did we recruit? So that's how that happened for parents and students. For the rest of the committee members from outside community or outside our Situate Public Schools community and the greater community, we got names from people who are really interested in this kind of work, and we also reached out to people we thought would be interested in this kind of work. So, you know, we have, I feel like we have really invested people, and I'm, I'm happy to be co-chairing this committee with school committee member, Brandalino, Brandalini. And so the other thing I did want to say is that we have a couple of tasks for us. Our first meeting is this Thursday through Zoom at 6:00 PM. The invitation has been sent out to the committee members, and I'd just like to say here publicly that if you are on the committee and did not receive the Zoom invitation, please reach out to me, and I'll make sure you get it. We're going to do a couple of things at that first committee meeting. We're going to talk about our norms. I think it's critical that we have good norms in place because people are really, really passionate about this issue, and, and that's good, and that's positive. I feel like we'll have some divergent perspectives, which is important. It's healthy. So that's one of the things that I just want to stay very clearly, that we wanted to be respectful. One of the things that we will work on is the anti-racism resolution that the school committee wants to develop. But I'm going to start with having all of the members look at our anti-discrimination policy, which I uploaded to our, I made a shared drive that I'm going to share with our committee members tomorrow. But I've uploaded some documents on there, but it's, it's important, I think, for people to understand that we have an anti-discrimination policy, school committee policy, and that really should be foundational for the work that we're going to do. So that's one of the things we're going to talk about. And we're going to, part of this has to be curriculum review and revisions. Are we addressing students in a way that they feel they're represented? Do we have enough authors, black and brown people who are authors? Do we have enough stories about black and brown people? Or homosexuals, or transgender, or special education students? So it's, it's a wide range of issues when we talk about diversity, equity, inclusion. So I will, we want to update you at every meeting during the subcommittee updates, and I'm looking forward to reporting more about our work and the progress we made.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the school committee? There are none. I think we're all questioned out.
I'd just like to comment. I, I think I might have said this before, that it's very, I love hearing from the students that want more in the curriculum. You know, I think we do a really good job of teaching what's required by, you know, according to the guidelines, but clearly the, the kids want more. And, and I think this is an important first step in getting the kids, giving to them what they're clearly craving to learn about, you know.
And to that point, Mrs. Lindblom, we have students who are alumni on the committee and students in every single school on the committee. So that, that point is well taken, and, and that's something that's, will drive parts of our work.
Okay, thanks. And just, I guess a comment or kind of a question is, the town is also creating their DEI committee as well. I'm just curious if they've, if there is or will be any coordination between the two. I know this is kind of the ongoing question. I just, I'm just curious to make sure there's some conformity to it all.
Right, so Superintendent Burkhead and I talked about that. And yes, we're going to have representatives from the school department and the advisory here on, for this committee on the town committee. I know that Mr. Hayes is on the town committee. I haven't heard that they've done anything yet, so we kind of wanted to get, get out, you know, we really wanted to get this going.
Yes, no, I agree. I agree. We're, I think we're one step ahead of them. So, or of the town, I should say. So yeah, getting this going sooner, or as you're, as you stated, is, I think is right on target.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Any other questions for Ms. Arnold? All right, collective bargaining subcommittee, Superintendent Burkhead.
Thank you, Chairman Gates. I just wanted to bring to your attention that the Situate Teachers Association has asked to begin negotiations on the impact of the change in working condition based on a new remote learning plan. So I'd like to ask the committee members of the subcommittee on negotiations if they would be available and interested to start that work.
We have Mike, Mike Long and Janice are our members.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll be available. Will it, will the, it'll just address the three plans? I need the three versions, so to speak?
At this time, yes.
I'm available.
Mike Long?
Yeah, so am I.
Okay, good.
Thank you both. We'll be, if we could have, we'll have Ms. Peters in touch with setting up some dates and times that are convenient for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, and for those who are still, I think you still have a hundred participants, this is our second and final spot on the agenda for comments, questions, or statements. Please, as I learned today, on the reactions button on the bottom of your screen, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. All right, seeing none, we will move on. Correspondence, you guys should all see in our, your backup, there was some information received from MASK. I know you also get some of that stuff at home as well, just for your reference. And then there is Situate High School graduation on Saturday. We received the formal invitation. If you haven't responded yet, please do so. That's this Saturday at 10:00 AM.
And I think, I think I asked this of Bill the other night, but maybe he can clarify for people that, you know, will see this meeting aired later, that the, the graduation will be livestreamed for people that can't attend.
Yes, so I, we need to get that information out, so I will make sure that happens right away. So if you don't, yeah, if you haven't received, especially since you're a parent, so I think, yeah, so I will get right on that. Thank you.
Just, I mean, because, and I think people need to understand that it's by invitation only, even, even, even though it's outside.
And I think that's a real good point in that, you know, we, we are, have strict guidelines for social distancing and how many who can be there, and we gotta make sure we adhere to that. So thank you for reinforcing that. It's invitation only, an event.
Yeah.
I will not be going. I'm still not comfortable in going to any large group indoors or outdoors, so I'll be watching.
Okay. All right, warrants.
Yes, yes. We had five warrants that were, were signed by one of the members of the school committee on behalf of all the members of the school committee. On June 27th, we had a total warrant of $105,432.23. On 6/30, we had a warrant for $147,470.63. On July 2nd, our first fiscal year '21 warrant was for $96,057.15. On 6/26/30, there was a fiscal year '21 warrant that was $202,674. And on July 14th, there was a warrant signed for $34,385.80. And that was a fiscal year '21 warrant. And those will have to be read into the minutes, and I believe Jeannie has a copy of those for the record.
Perfect. Thank you. So yeah, just read into the minutes and not voted on, correct?
Nope.
Okay.
You don't need to vote on them.
All right. Any other business? The only thing I have to add, I'm gonna give a, an update as a liaison to the Board of Selectmen. I attended their July 14th meeting at the Maritime Center. Essentially, I wasn't aware of this, but every year I believe they get together and they talk about their priorities for the year. So it was interesting to, to be in attendance there. I was one of three members of the public that were there. I guess it was probably similar to our workshop, but where our workshop focused on how we could work better as a board, their workshop was, what do we need to focus on? I thought it'd be interesting to let the committee know of what those priorities were. What they did is they sent out just a survey to each one of their members, listing their priorities. The number one priority identified by the selectmen was what to do with Old Gate School. Number two was North Situate Regional Sewer Plan. That was actually tied with Old Gate. They both had four members who responded as a priority. The third was their water treatment plant, replacement, timing, and financing. The next was what to do with Pier 44, which is the community, currently the community, what's it called, community building? And next on the list was school committee, Board of Selectmen cooperation and planning, followed by same priority, continued investments in improving water quality and quantity. So those are the top five, or so I just wanted to mention to you. It's been my priority as well for this school committee to work collectively with the selectmen, and they've identified that as one of their priorities as well. Obviously, the pandemic is creating a little bit more of a challenge in doing so, but perhaps is also giving us an opportunity to make it happen sooner rather than later, as we will need some cooperation from the town side in terms of, I don't know what's going on outside, in terms of making sure that we're fully funded for our school reopening. I thought that would be helpful to deliver that to the committee.
That's something we used to do as a school committee a number of years ago. I think we stopped about four years ago, but we used to meet once a year and do something similar.
Okay.
As a school committee in the fall. So I don't know if we want to consider doing something like that as well, but I mean, that's something the school committee used to do as well.
Yeah, I think, I think what we do is we have another mass workshop and we're planning the end of August. So maybe we'll talk about, you know, potentially scheduling something. Sorry, my kids are outside coming in. Potentially scheduling something to that, to that extent to go over our priorities. So I think that they're shifting every day. Okay, next is our future agenda items. One thing that I did want to discuss was we have, so our, our vote to Desi is due August 10th. Our next meeting is August 10th, so it's not necessarily going to meet that deadline. So is there interest in adding a meeting on Thursday, August 6th to, to vote on the, the plan?
Better.
Yes.
Bill, depending on, are we meeting again as a task force in the next couple of days?
Yes, I sent something out. I had it for next Monday, but looking at the timeline being abbreviated, we might have to do something before that. With the DEI meeting on Thursday and Wednesday would be the next available time. I don't know if that's enough time for people. The other option is to keep the meeting on Monday and we can do some, we can share the questions that were received tonight and do some work online, I think, that way and get some feedback and dialogue going like we've been doing in between meetings. Might be my other recommendation. So I sent out a note today that we'll have a meeting next Monday and we'll make it a little longer if we have to. But in the meantime, I'll send out all the questions in the agenda tomorrow or Wednesday.
Well, I guess my question is, as a school committee, seeing as we've gotten a lot of participants and there were at least 70 questions that came up during the course of tonight, do we, do we need to meet at least twice next week? To either show the plan and how we've addressed some of those questions or just meet one more time before we have to actually vote the final plan? And in the past, you know, typically we see something, review it and then vote it in the, in the subsequent meeting. And, you know, if we see something one night and then have to approve it right away, I just want to make sure that we, as a school committee and then as a community, have time to review and respond and vote this before it goes back to the state. And obviously it's going, it could potentially change at the, you know, as we go through August, but just, you know, making sure we meet those state guidelines, but also taking kind of the feedback. And I don't know how many emails are getting in that 2020 task force email, but, you know, just making sure we have all the information, all the questions coming out so that it's not the task force reviewing everything and then coming to the school committee like this, which, I mean, by the way, you, as a, as a district, you guys did an amazing job putting this together in such a short amount of time. But, you know, just making sure we can address everything and then ultimately feel comfortable voting it in a public meeting.
Can I ask for a point of clarification?
Sure.
So Mr. Long, you were saying that the school committee would like copies of the questions tonight as well as the 2020 emails we're getting to make a better decision?
No, I mean, I, I think you're addressing them well throughout the presentations you made. I mean, we don't need to see everything. It's more just, as an, as an updated presentation comes to the school committee that, and I'm sure you'll do this anyways, you know, this came up and here's how we addressed it as we go forward. And I think that's all we need. But it's just having enough time to then digest that and then, you know, feel comfortable voting it.
I agree.
Okay, so should, so should we plan on August 6th? And Superintendent Burkhead, so the submit, I'm not sure the, the method that you submit the plan is it, I'm assuming it's some sort, is it electronic through a website or is it an email? And how, and is the deadline, you know, midnight or at what point is the actual deadline? Do you know that?
I think it's midnight by the end of the day, August 10th. So we technically have till midnight and it is electronic.
Okay, so as a committee, again, Mike, to your point and something that we brought up recently is the school committee oftentimes is, is voting on, on things after just seeing them the first time theoretically. Do we want to meet on the 6th and then as theoretically, I guess, our second read? And then, and then meet again on Monday to make the final vote? Is that going to be necessary? And Superintendent Burkhead, would that, do you think that that would still work if we waited until nine o'clock on Monday, the 10th to vote it?
Yeah, I, I think having, and it goes along with Mr. Long said, I think having the opportunity for the school committee to hear the, the plan and give feedback like this evening and then vote the following Monday would give us on the school side an opportunity to work out any final kinks a couple more days. Because if you think about it, August 10th is, is soon enough. And now if we bring it back to August 6th, it's really only given us a week to come up with, from this draft to a pretty comprehensive one. So, you know, that can be done, but I, I do appreciate if we could have two meetings because I, I think having one meeting and make a decision of that magnitude without having the weekend to think about it and give feedback, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't be justifiable. So I would recommend the 6th and the 10th. And I can ask the, in the meantime, I can get ahold of the commissioner and see if, you know, obviously midnight's acceptable or before that, so I'm sure that'll be fine.
I want to make sure you have enough time to do what you need to to put the presentation together. That's part of my concern. I don't want us on the 10th at nine o'clock to like, oh, change this, this and this, and we approve it. And then you have three hours to, you know, submit it. We want to give you the time and the, the leeway that you need.
Yes, I think that's a good, I think that's a great point. I think that there's, there's no real best answer. Like a lot of this, it's, I think that's why we, we may consider the 6th because although that makes the timeline a lot, you know, a few days shorter, four days shorter, it does allow us to present a plan and then get the feedback and give us the long weekend to make all those edits and updates, if there should be any, with confidence that the final draft on the 10th will give us a second shot at that versus just meeting on the 10th and, you know,
Yeah.
you know, not having any time to fix it.
Okay.
I mean, I think Peter made the point earlier, that in this meeting, we're going to get comments from now until the end of the next school year or whenever we get back to a normal, quote unquote, normal, you know, school environment. So I don't want to belabor this by continually getting feedback. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we give you enough time to make the updates you need, but that we have enough time to review it and feel comfortable with it.
Bill, the, the format that we saw tonight, would that be the same format that you present to Desi? Or do they have a 50-page form you have to fill out or something like that?
Great question, Mr. Hayes. The, their form, this one is actually, the, the presentation probably has more meat in it than the form. It's kind of, it's much simpler. I think for this preliminary document, that's why they're not having it expected to be voted on. I think it's just their information on how many schools are going hybrid versus in person. You know, so they're asking a handful of questions on that. It's not a lot. So I'll take basically this, I, I chose to present it in this way versus they're asking to do, us to do it in kind of essay format. So I'll take this presentation and just put it into words, into their, their questions. But it's, it's not a very encompassing document. The final comprehensive document is obviously a lot more involved.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you.
With that being said, Superintendent Burkhead, if, again, I, I think it is the right thing to do to have a meeting, which is next Thursday, the 6th, and then meet again on the 10th. But as Mike Long said, we got to make sure that you have enough time, obviously, to make updates between now and next Thursday and then potentially between Thursday and Monday, and then get that into the proper format for submission by, you know, anticipated midnight on Monday. So just want to make sure that, that you're able to do that, specifically on Monday, I think is my concern.
Yeah, you know, I think that, I think that we have to spend a lot of time at the sixth meeting kind of hashing out the expectations of that document so that the bits or the changes from the sixth document to the 10th are what you expect and want so that we can, you know, assure a more positive chance of a positive vote. Otherwise, you know, the timeline is what it is. I would also like to state that, you know, this aggressive timeline by the state being due August 10th, when we may not be starting school till September 10th. You know, we do have another month to, to make changes at the school level. Remember, this is a school board decision. The commissioner has stated that to us. It's not his final decision. So although this is Desi's plan, our plan continue, can continue to evolve. Because quite honestly, it's, you know, what do we got, 10 days or so to get, get this thing all into a final plan? There'll be a lot more questions after that too. So I think, you know, what I'd like to, to reiterate is that although that will be the plan, that certainly doesn't have to be the final plan. That's something that we will have time, even after the 10th, and we'll need it, quite honestly. On a week from now or a week from Thursday to come up with a many-page document from the framework we have is, you know, is not extremely realistic. So we will have a draft that, again, is simplified and meets a lot of these questions that were asked tonight. You're a lot of the expectations of the school committee. Get that in that frame around the ways Desi wants it and then get them what the state needs, but also understanding that that vote means that you can have subsequent votes to, on anything you want. Your, it's your call how we run our school in the fall with understanding the guidelines that we have to work with, obviously. But I just, I do want to reiterate that, that we, you know, the August 10th deadline doesn't mean that's the plan that we're going to do in September.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's helpful. Yeah, I mean, there's going to be a longer delay between the time that we submit the plan in the first day of school, theoretically than it was to say, you got to come up with a plan. So that's, that's good that we have the flexibility to do that. So what we'll do is we'll make a meeting for Thursday, August 6th. And I would have believed, I mean Superintendent Burkhead and I will work on the agenda. I assume it will just be the reopen school as our agenda item.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, that be an only agenda item that night. And again.
Losing you, Mike. Anyone else here, Mike?
Oh, yeah.
Mike, I couldn't hear your last comment.
Did I fade out there?
Yeah, and I can hear now.
And then I, my second point was just to make sure that our meeting schedule is contingent upon Bill making contact with the governor's office or Desi or whomever that we can file our plan with the state after that meeting on the 10th.
Okay.
And I'm looking for it by five o'clock and, you know.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, Bill, just confirm that deadline for us. Just to make sure that we don't put ourselves into a bad, a tough situation.
Right.
But.
And Bill, part of my comment too was, you know, we need to be here to support you over the next two weeks. So if you need to meet two or three times or whatever the case may be, you know, the six is what, what works for you and that's, you know, a plan that makes sense to get us to the 10th. Perfect, fine. If you need to meet three times over the next week to finalize this out, you know, we as a school committee need to make sure that we're there to support you as well so that you and the task force steering committee can move forward and, you know, not be rushing to get something out by the 10th or the 6th.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right, so we'll schedule again August 6th, 6:00 PM as the lone agenda item. I was going to do this. I'm going to send this out. Let me see if you guys, anyone still on this call too? I set this up just for fun. I want to see if it works. Ready? Did you get something?
Yes.
Look at this. It's amazing. Well, it closed pretty quickly. I got 12 and it's 12 to zero in favor of Zoom. I don't know why it closed so quickly, but it did. I got 12 votes Zoom, so we're going to stay with Zoom. And where is this? End poll. Sorry, I'm getting more now.
Isn't that, that generated by Zoom?
Now, sorry, now I tell you, I'm getting more. This is crazy. Every single vote has been for Zoom. What's that?
I said I like Microsoft Teams, but that's just me.
All right. I got one vote for, two votes for Google Meet. All right, I'm going to end the poll. Okay, and I just, just to let you guys know, not that it really matters, but we luckily anticipated that we're going to have more than 100 participants tonight. So the district has their own Zoom account and that's what we're using. And we will probably continue to use it as we go through this because with our old platform, if more than 100 came, we would have limited to the first 100 and that not, probably wouldn't have been so good. So thank you to Superintendent Burkhead and Ms. Peters for allowing me to, to use this. We just have to be, we have to be certain that no one else is using this login at the same time as our meetings.
To thank Nancy, Nancy Hope. She's the one that allowed us to do this. Get more than 100 for the Zoom account.
Yeah, so we have to pay. We have to pay for some special account. I'm pretty sure we can, we can afford it. It was money well spent.
Yeah, Janice will see that in the next warrant.
I was thinking you were going to say on my account.
No, it's in the next warrant.
Okay, next, so for those that are still on, we're going to vote to adjourn the public meeting and go into executive session. We will not return to public session following our executive session. So once we vote to enter executive session, if you could kindly log off, that would be fantastic. Do I have a motion?
Excuse me, Commissioner Gates, can I interject one time? I'm sorry.
Sure.
I just had, I apologize. I just had some real-time information that I wanted to share with Ms. Lindblom's question about graduation. It might help the greater community because I know Dr. Maguire is on the call. So she put the answer to your question, Ms. Lindblom, in the chat. So I just wanted to make sure I got that out there because it was an important question. Citro TV will be live streaming the graduation on their YouTube and Facebook pages. Updated information will be sent out to graduates and families, but anyone can find the graduation there on those stations live Saturday at 10:00 AM. There's no opportunity for standing guests this year due to the social distancing guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maguire. He's still here.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn and move into executive session? In the backup, there's language.
Yeah, I make a motion that the school committee enter executive session for reason number three to discuss strategy sessions with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining of litigation, litigating position of the public body in the chair. So to clear, is that?
Second. Sorry, motion by Lindblom, second by Hayes. Roll call vote, Brinalini?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Hayes?
Yes.
Lindblom?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, for those public participants, if you wouldn't mind logging off, that would be great. We will not be returned to public session.